We're live.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Lo para? Ms. Lau?
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal? Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the January 26th meeting link. The agenda, presentations, and equity impact statements have been translated in all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to be offering live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. After the interpreters finish introducing themselves and providing Zoom instructions, we will activate the interpretation icon, the globe at the bottom of your screen. Click the icon, select your language preference. Will our Spanish interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Espanol?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, school committee members, distinguished guests. My name is Juan Bernal. I am the Spanish interpreter whom will be providing consecutive interpretation for Rafaela Palanco Garcia, school committee member, Spanish speaking. I will now proceed to explain how to access the interpretation feature in Spanish. Muy buenas noches para todos. Bienvenidos a la reunión de hoy. Para accesar el recurso de la interpretación, busquen, por favor, el globo que aparece en la parte inferior de sus pantallas y seleccione español como su idioma de preferencia haciendo un clic sobre el globo en la parte derecha ante la pantalla inferior. De igual manera, aquellas personas que se estén conectando de un teléfono celular, de un iPad o de una tableta, busquen los tres puntos que aparecen en la parte superior derecha de sus pantallas donde dice "Language interpretation", seleccionen español como su idioma de preferencia. Bienvenidos, muchas gracias. Thank you very much. The last interpreter may introduce himself.
Hello, muy buenas noches damas y caballeros. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the school committee board. Muy buenas noches damas y caballeros. Yo soy Randall Osomínguez. Voy a ser uno de los interpretes simultáneos de la noche de hoy. Voy a estar trabajando con mi colega, la señora Luz. Muchas gracias y nos vemos el otro lado.
Good evening. My name is Luz Barreto. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Luz Barreto. Seré su intérprete simultánea de español. Y que nos vaya muy bien esta noche. Gracias.
Thank you. Will our Haitian Creole interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Haitian Creole?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Sergio Centilher, Haitian Creole interpreter. No por placer, yo te encore, por no presentar, sé yo sa, apremi tiya, moi même avec nadéch, c'est nous cap assurez interpretation. Et comment ça va le fait? Ma peut continuer et interprétation ça jusqu'à sept heures du soir. Et nadéch apprend à sept heures, la fini à neuf heures trente. Ma tourné encore à neuf heures trente et puis ma fini jusqu'à ce que le fini. Et non, merci au parce que wa suivre et puis nous connais, wa suivre avec attention, sou besoin, anté la conversation, pas oublier poser question. Wa capable cliquer dans globes là, ouais, et puis wa capable si son besoin, nap tradu pour, nous parle by nadéch, parli tout suite. Et puis avancer ça, continuer. Merci beaucoup. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bonsoir, tout le monde. Non, c'est nadéch. Moi, c'est un real plaisir pour moi interprété pour nous assouer. Donc comme Sergio fait dino là, ma commence interprété pour nous à sept heures jusqu'à neuf heures trente. Et si nous quai question, pas oublier, tapez la chat, là, c'est un real plaisir pour nous là, pour nous servir. Merci bien.
Thank you. Will Cabo Veriano interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cabo Veriano?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jose and tonight I'm going to be myself and my partner.
Can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me now?
Still unable to hear you. You might need to come back into the main channel.
I am. Hold on a second. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Still unable to hear you.
Madam Chair, I can hear him but just very, very softly.
Very faint.
Hold on a second, hold on. Hold on a second here.
Can we get some technical assistance because we're not hearing?
Hi. In the meantime, Madam Chair, I can introduce myself.
Can you guys hear me now?
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hello. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
What about now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the passion. I'm going to stop again. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair, and then myself and my partner, Armando, we're going to be a key virgin interpreter for the meeting tonight. Ah, obrigado. Buon noite. Ah, sos cabardians ali. Hoje, nos reunión de hoy, no está mi compañero Armando. Por mi fa, sin traduc, no se to fa, sin traducción, y pos no taban, chudanios, co cabardians na parte de interpreter. Por tanto, si os teni laptop, para stop, y os pudi calcar na que part que ten la, que un globo. Porque os calca la, et ten part la que ta flashelat, language, ah, interpretation. So, la, or que os calca, la, y os ta selecte que lingua cabverdiana. Y si os teni tabletta mobile, ten que el tres pinguiño, no une que os ca calca, que el tres pinguiño, mas un beset de renios que el, access, no une que ta fa, language interpretation, la y os ta calca, y os ta selecciona, nos lingua preferido que cab verde Creole. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Armando Monteiro. I'm going to be your key virgin Creole interpreter. Buon noite, a tu d'again, Sanz encontro. Ah, mi名, mi Armando Monteiro, sabien ser bu interprete de Creole, Cabo Veriano. Muito obrigado. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Will our Cantonese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Cantonese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. My name is Terry. Maple and I will be your Cantonese interpreter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. 大家好，我係Maple，我係Terry今晚嘅搭档。咁我哋一陣間見啦。Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Mandarin interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Mandarin?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. My name is Wei. Tonight Tina and I will be your Chinese Mandarin interpreters.
Thank you, Wei. 呃，大家好，我是Wei的这个搭档。我们一会儿见，谢谢。Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Will our Vietnamese interpreters please introduce yourselves and give Zoom instructions in Vietnamese?
Good evening. My name is Vee and Vee would be Vietnamese interpreter for the meeting tonight. Nà xin chào các anh chị. Vee và chị sẽ là thông dịch liên tục cho các anh chị. Nếu mà cần tiếng Việt, thông dịch thì anh chị bấm vào quả cầu và chọn ngôn ngữ, tiếng Việt thì Duyên sẽ cung cấp thông dịch liên tục cho các anh chị. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vee. I would be your Vietnamese interpreter for this meeting tonight. Kính chào quý vị. Tôi là Vee. Tôi và chị Duyên sẽ cung cấp liên tục thông dịch cho quý vị vào buổi tối ngày hôm nay. Cảm ơn rất nhiều. Thank you.
Thank you. Will our American Sign Language interpreters please introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Amanda. I'm interpreting for tonight.
Thank you.
This is Michael. He's interpreting for tonight as well.
Thank you. Is that it? Just the two?
One more. Hello, I'm Michelle. I will be interpreting for tonight as well.
Thank you. Thank you all for assisting us this evening. And thank you to all of the BPS staff behind the scenes who also provide support for our virtual meetings to run smoothly. We will now activate the interpretation icon at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for both public comment periods closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure you were signed into Zoom under the name that you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. I'd like to welcome our alternative student representative, Senator Tiffany Lau, who is sitting in tonight with Zaira Marissa. Welcome back, Tiffany. We're glad to have you with us. Good evening. We will begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the January 26, 2022 school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lo para?
Yes.
Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks, everyone, for being with us this evening. We have officially entered into the BPS budget season, and I'm just so excited about this year's budget, and it builds on two years of really exciting investments for our students. Our core focus is going to be on this presentation this evening. I'm going to preview and introduce the proposed FY23 BPS budget later in my report. But first, I want to share a few updates and highlights. However, I'm going to begin with the acknowledgement of two BPS educators who we've just recently lost. It's with great sadness that I announce the passing of Marion Fahey, former Boston Public School Superintendent. During Ms. Fahey's tenure as superintendent, she played a critical role in implementing the desegregation of the Boston Public School system, a noble task laying the foundation for equity-based educational opportunities we endeavor to increase each and every day, even today. Ms. Fahey's most recently served as the former director and clerk of the Hingham Institution for Savings from 1992 through 2015, when she retired. She was instrumental in the effort by the present management group to establish control at Hingham, ensuring that the bank would remain independent and run for the benefit of its owners and its community over the next 30 years. The Boston Public Schools and South Shore communities have lost an education and excess champion. Ms. Fahey passed away peacefully in her home on January 11th at the age of 96. She will be missed. I learned earlier this week that one of our greatly revered retired BPS teachers had also passed away. Anne Mae Dancy made her transition on Saturday, January 15, 2022, at the age of 90. She was, as her children describe her, the epitome of an educator and coach. She taught history, health, physical education to thousands of young people from Mississippi to Missouri to Massachusetts. In Massachusetts, she began her tenure with BPS in 1967 as a substitute teacher, later moving into a permanent educator role at many of our schools, including the Martin Luther King School, the Solomon Lewenberg Middle School, Boston Technical High School, and Madison Park High School. She retired in 1998 after a 31-year BPS education career. In the summer months, she oversaw the operation of youth programs at the Norfolk and Almont Parks in Mattapan. And during this time, she instilled in countless youth the importance of self-love, social etiquette, and education. She also taught social etiquette classes at the Alma Lewis School of Fine Arts in Roxbury, Massachusetts, as well as engaged in several political campaigns. In 1956, she married James Dancy Senior, and of that union, seven children were born, who all went on to become educators, lawyers, and public servants, some of whom also went on to work for the district, including former Madison Park High School headmaster, Dr. Deborah Dancy. She reared her children to be responsible, respectful, strong, and to appreciate life and to have dignity. Although I didn't have a chance to meet Mrs. Dancy, I'm aware of her affect on so many of our educators and the BPS community at large. I'd like to send my sincere condolences to the Dancy family and all of those who were touched by her life. My thoughts and prayers are with you as you remember and celebrate this wonderful woman who taught and cared so much for our children. I'll now move on to the highlight portion of my report. The month of February represents the kickoff of many national observances across the United States. Many of us participate in Valentine's Day, showing love and affection toward those closest to us. And others consider the Super Bowl Sunday a major observance, cheering on their favorite team onto success. In the same vein of celebration, February also begins the observance of Black History Month. I'd like to share a bit about its origins. Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, is a month-long observance in the U.S., and it's considered a chance to celebrate black achievement and provide a fresh reminder to take stock of where systemic racism persists, giving visibility to the people and organizations creating change. The precursor to Black History Month was created in 1926 in the United States when historian Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History announced the second week of February to be Negro History Week. This week was chosen because it coincided with the birthday of Abraham Lincoln on February 12th and that of Frederick Douglass on February 14th, both of which states black communities had celebrated together since the late 19th century. It's important to note that February may have also been chosen for Black History Month as National Freedom Day is recognized, marking the signing of the 13th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which outlawed slavery on February 1, 1865. Passed in a bill by our U.S. Congress in 1947 and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman in 1948, February 1 is an officially designated observance in America for black Americans. Black History Month was first proposed by black educators and the Black United Students at Kent State University in February 1969. The first celebration of Black History Month took place at Kent State a year later, from January 2 to February 28, 1970. If there are any educators and students listening tonight, I want you to know that you have the power to create ideas that will change the world for years to come. Six years later, Black History Month was designated, was being celebrated at all across the country in educational institutions, centers for black culture and community centers, both great and small. When President Gerald Ford recognized Black History Month in 1976 during the celebration of the United States bicentennial, he urged all Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history, unquote. I would like to wish each person of African descent living in America a happy Black History Month. Although the black experience in the U.S. has been filled with strife and struggle, it is also an experience filled with rich heritage and resilience. And I am proud to be a representative of that heritage, and I look forward to sharing in the many events that we will host within BPS and Central Office this month, including students from the Orchard Gardens K-8 School, who will be performing short video biographies of important figures in black history to be played on Boston 25 News with Crystal Haynes throughout February. Also, the Office of Equity, Strategy, and Opportunity Gaps is hosting two Black History Month events this month for students, families, and the entire BPS community, as shown on your screen, with two events occurring on Thursday, February 10th, and a fireside chat with our own Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley on February 17. If you're interested in joining any of these events, please email strategy@bostonpublicschools.org. And lastly, be sure to mark your calendars for another event on Thursday, February 17th at 7:00 PM, when the BPS Arts Organization will be livestreamed a tribute to Black History Month, featuring dance from the Boston Arts Academy, the Definitely Dance Crew from the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard-Hearing, the O'Brien High School Hip-Hop Collective, the English High School Step Team, and more. You can get more information at www.bostonarts.org or, excuse me, www.bpsarts.org. www.bpsarts.org. You don't want to miss it. February 1st also marks the beginning of another celebration and season of cultural observance. To all celebrating members of the Asian and Pacific Island diaspora, I wish you a happy Lunar New Year. This year celebrates the Year of the Tiger, a beautiful animal that is known for its extreme competitiveness, courage, and ambition. While tigers are ambitious, they are also very generous animals with a drive to help others. These last two years have been extremely tough on all of us, individually and collectively. But my hope is that you will step into this new Lunar New Year with the ambition to continue pushing forward through such challenging times and with the courage to show up as your best and unique self each and every day. While tigers are very independent animals, they're also part of a larger animal kingdom and rely on others to survive. As we embark on this new year, remember to lean on your peers and your many wonderful and brilliant educators as much as you need to. As I always say, we're all better together. It's perfect that we're celebrating an animal such as a tiger this year because I'd like to ask each and every one of you to go into this new year courageous and with lots of ambitious ambition, while we also are remembering to be kind and generous to each other, to our teachers especially, and our educators, and all of those whom we love. Let's all be tigers this year and live unapologetically with the courage, strength, and ambition to continue getting through these uncertain times. I'm looking forward to hearing and seeing the photos and the videos of all the celebrations taking place across BPS between now and February 15th, filled with some of our most amazing talented performers. I'm especially looking forward to seeing a video of the beautiful traditional lion dances. We'll be sure to share those photos and videos of our celebrations around Lunar New Year on various social media platforms as they come in. We've also shared videos of the celebrations at the Mathers School and look forward to the videos from the Josiah Quincy School. Again, wishing a joyous Lunar New Year to all who celebrate, wishing you all happiness and prosperity in the Year of the Tiger. This next highlight personifies the power of persistence and laser focus on a single goal despite your personal circumstance. Mohamed Abounar is an alumnus of the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing and the school's class of 2019 valedictorian. Mohamed's goal was to become a police officer with the city of Boston. Unfortunately, not everyone believed he could do it because he is deaf. However, like most people who have the heart and mindset on an outcome, Mohamed saw his goal through to the end. I am so happy to announce that he was recently hired by the Boston Police Department as a police cadet. His success resulted from his unwavering faith in his abilities and his extraordinary effort despite others' limiting beliefs. Mohamed, I am so proud of you. Mohamed's story is an inspiration to all of us and reminds us that no matter what obstacles stand in our way, we should never give up on our dreams. To our incredible BPS staff who encourage our students to achieve their dreams, I thank you for your efforts and cultivating generations of young people who are not just dreamers but achievers. Continue to blaze a trail. And Mohamed, thank you in advance for protecting us and the city of Boston in your new role. I'm now going to move on to my district updates. As you might have seen, the media has written about our graduation data over the past few years based on audits from the city, the past several years, based on audits from the city. The issues date back to 2014 and focus on specific paperwork that is required to be filled and filed when a student leaves the district. Graduation rates are calculated based on a cohort of students who enter into the ninth grade on any given year. Over their four years of high school, students come and go in a cohort for a variety of reasons, such as when they transfer between schools and districts or between states and countries. If a student leaves for any reason from the cohort, the district must have documentation on file, paperwork uploaded, and kept on record at the school site. The threshold for what is acceptable and accepted documentation is set at a very high level, which can make it practically difficult to produce. It can be challenging finding students who have exited the district. It takes a constant watch, good phone numbers, and a lot of follow-up to get the records from other school districts. My team has been working to address this issue by issuing additional guidance and technical assistance to our school leaders and tracking the issues to ensure the data we collect and report is accurate. We are committed to the law and following the law and holding ourselves accountable for accurate reporting. The auditors review a small sample of records each year, roughly about 50 to 60 students out of the typical 4,000-student graduation cohort. The sample is not intended to be statistically valid. Auditors have identified issues for as low as seven students to a high of 32 students in any given year. Because graduation rates are based on a cohort of students who enter ninth grade together, and we have seen students move in and out of a cohort, it can be difficult to extrapolate how missing paperwork for a handful of students would impact a graduation or cohort dropout rate. I'm grateful to the school leaders, educators, and staff who work so closely with our students to keep them engaged and find pathways to graduation with each and every individual student. BPS reaches out to every student to discuss their plans and work with them to stay in school and on their path to graduation. During the pandemic, this work took on an extra importance, and I am proud of the extended efforts so many educators put in to reach every single student and support them in getting over that finish line and earning their diploma. We recognize this hard work of our students and our educators, and I'm still proud of every single one of those students who crossed that stage and earned their diploma. As you already know, athletics and performing arts activities have resumed since the temporary pause we had to observe as we were going through the Omicron since the temporary pause we had to observe as we were going through the Omicron surge. As of Monday, January thirty first, we progressed to allow limited spectators at athletic events. There will be a limit of two spectators allowed per student athlete for all athletic events in BPS facilities until we receive further guidance from BPHC making allowance for increased spectator capacity. We continue to make progress in the midst of the pandemic as the aftermath of Omicron variant begins to wane. We'll continue to update you with the guidance as it becomes available. I'd like to recognize another update in the realm of athletics. Today is National Girls, Women, and Sports Day. National Girls, Women, and Sports Day celebrates the achievements of girls and women in sports and advocates for equal and equal access and opportunity. This year marks the fiftieth anniversary of Title Nine, which opened the doors for girls and women's participation in sports. As a women athlete myself, I'm always proud to see the competitive drive and camaraderie of women identifying athletes in a field that has historically excluded us. Additionally, the Winter City Championship season started yesterday with indoor track and field, and BPS was victorious. Congratulations to the twenty twenty-two Indoor Track and Field City Champions, the girls' track and field team from Boston Latin Academy and the boys' track and field team from the O'Briant. I am so proud of you. Continue to make us BPS proud. As the last athletics update, the Swimming City Championship is tomorrow, Thursday, February third, at three thirty P M at Mandela Athletic Complex, shared by the Madison Park and O'Briant High Schools. The championship will be recorded and posted at a later date. We wish all of our participating students great luck, and let's bring home that trophy. I'll now move on to school-based updates. BPS has extended its priority school registration deadline for grades K zero, K one, six, seven, and nine to this Friday, February fourth. We came to this decision to extend the deadline after reviewing and taking into consideration the absent rate and necessary recovery time due to the Omicron variant-driven surge. It hampered some of our collection efforts in the first few weeks of January. This additional time will be used to follow up with families and staff to ensure equitable access, and so that new BPS families may also continue to make registration appointments with our welcome centers. The priority round for grades K zero, one, K one, six, seven, and nine will be extended by one week through February four to ensure that we're able to collect all school choice forms from our schools. Additionally, we sent written correspondence directly to our families about our extended registration deadline last week and anticipate this extension will yield the responses we expect and are hopeful to see progress. In last week's report, I reported on the delay of the implementation of the City of Boston's new COVID-nineteen vaccine requirement on January fifteenth. A day after my last report, we learned that the Massachusetts Beals Court issued a temporary stay delaying the full implementation of this mandate while a final decision is made. This means all city employees, including BPS staff, are currently reporting to work regardless of vaccination status. We await the final decision from the court and will remain in negotiations with our union partners regarding the vaccine policy. For those employees who are not yet vaccinated, we do still have the weekly testing requirement in place. I remain thankful for the ninety-four percent of our workforce who have received their vaccine, which is still an important step to ensuring the health and safety of our students, staff, and our overall community. As mentioned last week, we'll continue to work with any employee who needs more information or support accessing a vaccine. We value our workforce, and we'll provide and support any employee who are still hesitant and ensure that they have adequate information. We're here for you. As members will recall, we reported our confirmed positive cases of COVID-nineteen to the state on Wednesdays and update our public dashboard on Thursdays. We continue to see positive movement as the number of cases reported this week is four hundred and thirty-one total, including three hundred and thirty-one students and one hundred staff members. That is down from a high of seventeen hundred and eighty-seven total cases during the week of January sixth. So really good progress, although we don't want to see anyone getting sick. And so we'll be happy when this surge seems to go down and go away. I'm excited to announce additional investments in our students' learning and access to technology. Mayor Wu and Senator Markey announced an investment of over twelve million to bring digital equity and inclusion to nearly twenty-three thousand Boston public housing residents, library users, and school-aged families. This new funding provides free access to wireless broadband services and devices to help public housing seniors and residents get online. And we'll also provide additional Chromebooks for our students to extend access beyond the classroom and refresh for our teachers and their computers. So this new technology is going to be an absolute asset to our recovery efforts. This is another reminder that BPS is hiring. Please visit our website at BostonPublicSchools.org/jobs for a full list of our available roles and opportunities with the district. We are also working to simplify the application process, write more approachable job descriptions, and to provide openings via our social media channels. So please go to email info r c d at BostonPublicSchools.org with any questions. And now the moment that I've been waiting for, and hopefully you've all been waiting for. Tonight, we're here to present and preview the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. The BPS finance team has been diligently working with me, our executive team, and our partners at the city to present a budget that prioritizes our students, promotes excellence and equity, and makes good on our plan to return strong, recover well, and reimagine education in an ever-changing and uncertain world. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for the Boston Public Schools is guided by the belief that every child in every classroom in every school deserves the same, and for some historically underserved students, even greater opportunity and resources to learn, grow, and thrive. As we strive to ensure equity of opportunity and enact anti-racist decisions, we are called upon to maintain focus on our values and how those values are demonstrated through our budgets. The budget we are proposing includes an increase of forty million dollars this year for a total of a little more than one point three billion. As we enter into the FY twenty-three budget season, we're incredibly fortunate to have the leadership of Mayor Wu and her administration. The mayor has expressed her commitment to ensure our students have the teaching and support services they need to reach their full potential. I'm grateful to the mayor and her leadership team for their belief in and dedication to our students and their partnership in developing a budget that will address the immediate needs of our schools with a solid plan for long-term and sustained success for all our students, families, and staff. I'm also grateful for the partnership of former Mayor Walsh, who first believed in my vision for our schools and the strategic plan of the school committee in initiating a first-ever three-year, one-hundred-million-dollar commitment, and to Mayor Janey, who maintained that historic investment, and now Mayor Wu, who will continue this practice, will hopefully continue the practice of providing certainty to the school district on its funding, especially over multiple years during our recovery. I also want to thank the full city council, who has every year passed the BPS budget and supported our students. I look forward to working with all of the counselors this year, especially our new Chair of Education Counselor Julia Mejia and new Chair of Ways and Means, Tanya Anderson Fernandez, Tanya Anderson Fernandez, to pass this budget that makes major investments in our students' recovery. This budget builds on two years of increases that go directly to our students. This funding is above all costs, increases, and salaries. It also represents the final installment of the three-year commitment. A hundred and ten million-dollar increase over these past three years. That's the funding that schools need to ensure we get our students what they need. Last year, we introduced a framework anchored in three guiding principles: return, recover, reimagine. This continues to be the lens through which we organize our support for students and schools. Our district staff and incredible leaders have worked exceedingly hard to return well, and we must continue to invest in how our students and schools recover strong. Academic recovery for our students with a special focus on those who are most in need is one of our main priorities of the FY twenty-three budget. We will also continue to focus on social and emotional well-being and development, recognizing that students will need time, care, and attention in order to succeed academically. As educators, we have long balanced the immediate needs of our students with a forward-thinking look to a brighter future. Therefore, we continue to adapt and evolve to ensure better outcomes for all our students. We will listen to our stakeholders and learn from this pandemic, and we will apply what's worked to our strategy and reimagine new possibilities, opening up greater opportunities for our students. We can't go back to pre-pandemic world, and with good reason. The system just wasn't working for too many of our students. We will make progress toward these goals with new investments from Mayor Wu and the City of Boston. We have leveraged our city's unparalleled financial support to build our quality guarantee. Using this three-year, hundred-million-operating investment, we are working to guarantee a baseline of services across all schools through a high-quality experience regardless of school, program, or neighborhood. This quality guarantee will grow to include student and family supports, rigorous curriculum and academics, twenty-first-century facilities, and many enrichment opportunities for all students. We launched our investment in student and family supports with the allocation of a full-time nurse at every school in school year twenty. We built on this foundation in school year twenty-one as we returned to in-person learning with the addition of family liaisons to cultivate trust and provide needed support to our families during this crisis. And we added at least one full-time social worker at every school to support the social-emotional needs of our students. These investments started before the pandemic but have only proven to be more crucial to our overall effort to return strong and recover well. To add to this support team we've been building, this year, we are investing in school-based academic counselors. We are investing to support all schools pre-K through grade twelve in understanding the post-pandemic profile of our learners is not limited to one grade span but is necessary across all grades. School leaders need our ongoing support, coordinating the recovery through our student support teams, and doing our individualized success planning in providing for our students' social-emotional needs, including individual learning plans, special education I E Ps, working with a technology tool called Panorama so that we can monitor and hold ourselves accountable to the success plans that we write, and reviewing our English learner data to make sure that our students are meeting their academic goals and their needs are met. We believe these new positions will round out the network to support principals with their school student support teams and our hub schools framework. Our goal is to create high-quality, rigorous, ethnically and culturally responsive curriculum and instruction that is robust and leads to strong academic pathways. Our team's work is to reconfigure the district to unlock resources and respond to declining enrollment. This year, we've made the difficult decision to close three schools as part of the school committee's approved plan to streamline the number of school configurations in order to reduce the number of transitions students need to make over the course of their academic careers in BPS. We've also reconfigured fifteen elementary schools to add sixth grade and expanded three additional high schools to include seventh and eighth grades. This work builds on the seventeen K-six and three other seven-twelve expansions over the last three years, which needs to continue in future years as we progress toward our goal of one point of transition for our students. In the meantime, we're working with school leaders during this budget season to deliver on access to the mass core at the secondary level and access to more counselors, particularly at the ninth-grade level, where we have lowered the national student-to-teacher ratio by one hundred students from one to one-fifty instead of one to two-fifty to give the right amount of support needed after this pandemic to reach these new and higher graduation standards. We've also added more physical education, art, music, and academic enrichment within the students' schedules so that students could meet these requirements within the mass core. This is the work we will collaboratively engage in with school leadership teams to review each school's existing allocation and how they schedule students. I'm especially proud of this work to standardize the graduation requirements across all high schools and to set the bar high to college and career readiness as we strive toward our strategic goals of accelerating learning and an equitable opportunity for all. Onto facilities. Our FY twenty-three budget will continue to invest in facility repairs through our operating budget and will make critical investments in new facilities through our capital budget. Our quality guarantee will bring more gyms, libraries, and auditoriums where they don't already exist. Through new buildings, we add critical spaces that are missing from our existing facilities, which includes nursing spaces, counseling and sensory and therapeutic spaces, and outdoor learning gardens, play spaces, and outdoor learning spaces. We are laying the groundwork for these investments but recognize that it takes many years, multiple years actually, over and sustained focus to achieve the results our students deserve. The final area of quality guarantee is extending learning and enrichment. In our operating budget, we extend access to quality library collections. As we expand our high school redesign, we will continue to invest in athletics at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Finally, I want to address the issue of enrollment. It is challenging that we continue to experience declines in enrollment across our schools. This is largely due to broader demographic trends. There are fewer students living in Boston and entering our school district as the birth rate declines and cost of living continues to rise. Our plan is to continue to support schools through this period of instability with soft-landing funding. We know that this is only a short-term solution. We need to make bigger, system-wide adjustments, and with your courageous help, we will over time. Therefore, as we did last year, we provided additional funding outside of weighted student funding to maintain programs and services to students. In FY twenty-two, total soft landings for schools was twenty-seven-point-four million dollars. In FY twenty-three, we are providing fifty-four-point-one million in soft landings, an increase of twenty-six-point-seven million. We know the soft landing is very important for us this year as we continue to recover from the pandemic. But we also know that it's not sustainable long-term. As a district, we will continue to support our schools while also understanding what future budgets will look like. While the ever-changing and evolving pandemic continues to challenge us, it has also spurred enormous creativity and innovation in the way we think about our students' needs and the way we do our work. This budget offers a unique opportunity to partner with the mayor, city council, and this committee to make progress toward our goal of equity and excellence for all our students. I look forward to working alongside all of you to make these goals a reality. Thank you in advance for your partnership and your commitment to our students. I'll now turn it over to our school committee members to respond to any questions about my report, and then later you'll hear from our Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter, Deputy Chief Financial Officer David Bloom, and Deputy Superintendent of Academics Drew Eccleston, and of course, myself, who will present the official FY twenty-three budget proposal. And that is my superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you, superintendent. I will now open it up to questions and discussions from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. That's one to two questions. And would like to remind BPS staff to also be briefing your responses. If you, oops, sorry. Turned my camera around, sorry about that. If you have additional questions, I'll come back to you to do a second round. If you have a question, please raise your virtual hand or put the request in chat. Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
I thank you so much, superintendent, for your report, and it's good to see everyone again tonight. My question, I'm just thinking about what you were sharing earlier, and I think so many of us read that Globe report about graduation rates. And I think about, you know, public trust and the way that we erode that trust, even if it's perception and not reality. I'm curious if you sort of what controls you're putting in place if you think it's a problem? And I think more importantly, you named that the data just wasn't statistically significant. Is there any way that we would be showing a statistically significant sample to, I think, rebuild that trust that so many families were having around these increases?
That is an excellent question. We have been proposing and have proposed and funded a risk management office in the Boston Public Schools. It was something that I have been wanting to do since I got here. And we have four positions. One is the lead risk management officer. Then we have a position for controls. We have one for compliance, and we have one for auditing. And these four individuals will work together to provide the kind of controls that we need to for the data integrity across departments to look at our systems and processes and to give us an accountability check on ourselves. Certainly, the city had been doing this since 2014 and looking at these audit reports, and the team had been putting in place controls for that with reminders and trainings to our school leaders. And I expressed to you kind of the challenge of trying to, you know, if there's a student who is deceased, for instance, you have to get public record of, you know, a death record, and sometimes you can't get that from a from a family, or it's challenging to get it from a family. And then the school leader would know that the child was deceased, you know, and but maybe wouldn't have the documentation for it. And so what we just have to get clear on is really just getting really dogged about making sure that we have those acceptable paperwork. And sometimes because the standard is so hard for, high for that paperwork, which you know in New York City, right? I mean, you know the problem. It can be challenging when you have students who maybe move out of country and you, you know, after a death or after, you know, after leaving the system or a family member gets deported or something happens that's very challenging for us to be able then to go and get that paperwork. As I reported, it was a very small number, you know, it was seven to 32 in the findings that they found. But I think you raise a better question about our risk management office and the controls and how do we put in place a system now to restore that trust? And so the team has been working on the training and working with the principals. But once we get the risk management office up, which I'm hoping will be in the next several months, we, they're having, we're having the same labor shortage problems as everybody else about trying to get a risk manager. It's a very technical field, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a limited pool out there. And so, but it is a priority of my administration to get that done.
And then just building off of that, and thank you, and I agree with you, I understand the complexities and the level, the high level of documentation that's needed. I'm just curious, there's sort of two pieces to the puzzle, right? There's the risk management piece, which is important, and it's exciting to hear that we're putting that in place. I think it definitely builds trust. But I also wonder on a school-based level, is there a pathway for schools to escalate cases that they know, believe to be true, but are unable to get documentation so that, that sort of we remove that burden from schools and bring it up to central so that we can make sure the data is accurate, that in in any sort of analysis that we're able to show our reality, but also that these sort of stories don't float around that, that, you know, in a time of enrollment decline further sort of hurt our position?
Those are all very good suggestions. And, you know, one of the things that's going to help us in this budget is to ensure that they have the capacity in schools to do this paperwork as well with the addition of the counselors. You know, many of our schools don't have registrars, you know, and people who actually do this function at the school, and it does land on our school leaders often, you know, they're doing so much. But to your point, I think our school counselors that we're, we're going to be putting in is going to really help with this as well as doing some of the other checks through our risk management office and the kind of controls that you've suggested.
Thank you so much. I'm excited to see the budget proposal later as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
I thank you for the presentation. Again, I was wondering if you could say a little bit more about the, the investment for native language communication? And as this relates to sort of the literacy, the bilingual literacy foundation and seal that you want students to receive. And it's more specifically related to the search for bilingual educators and bilingual special educators. Just where within that funding will money be allocated there?
And is it possible to have the, that question during the budget proposal? Can we save that one? And then Nate and his team can answer that, and Dr. Eccleston can answer that question as part of the budget presentation?
Sure thing.
Great. You can hold that, hold that then, because some of that might be answered in the, in the presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Lau?
I'm not sure if this question could also be answered in the later presentation, but I was just wondering, since it expanding us schools to fit in the sixth grade and some schools to fit in the seventh and eighth grade, will there be more funding specifically allocated to those schools? As I've heard from like students in those schools that some of their courses are cut and like the lack of space and kind of like struggling to combine, connect with the other group of students that are coming into that school? I was wondering if there would be more of the budget allocated to those schools to help those students?
Yeah, probably Nate can take this question. But whenever we add a grade to a school, they get additional funding for, you know, for their, for their transition to the school, and then also just to fund their education there. So the funding would follow them there, yes?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add on that, superintendent. I would just say, we, for both the sixth-grade additions and the seventh and eighth grade that are being added to the, to the high schools, we're currently working with those school leaders, and particularly for the high schools that were just announced last week. We're finalizing the allocations that will go to staffing, and then they'll also receive extra curriculum materials and furniture, what they need to run the program. And then we'll talk a lot tonight about our high school investment in mass core that's meant to increase the number of course offerings, rigorous course offerings for high school students.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will hold my budget questions until the full budget presentation. Thank you for the overview, superintendent. I want to continue the thought process that Mr. Cardad Hernandez started to go down as well, which is about the issue that was raised in the paper this week about the graduation rates and the tracking. And I am enormously sensitive to how difficult it can be. You know, when you talk to folks, for example, at the re-engagement center who work on this on a day-by-day basis and are working and focusing on our dropouts, they can share about, you know, how difficult some of the tracker, tracking issues are that you raised, superintendent. So I am very sensitive to the challenges. And you said that the bar is extraordinarily high on what documentation is acceptable, and I certainly understand that. I'm trying to get a sense, though, because the information that was shared in the paper doesn't really give you a sense of the scale of what we're talking about. So it's great that you shared, superintendent, that, you know, in one case, the city auditors looked at 40 cases and they saw problems with seven. In another case, I think you said they looked, they saw problems like 30 out of 40. But that is a small sample, that is a sample that the auditors took of the overall population of students in a cohort that did not continue. And it'll probably be difficult to have this answer now, but at some point, I'll be interested in, you know, what is this, what is the, you know, we know how many students graduated. We know how many started in a cohort. We know how many students graduated. And I understand the difficulty of tracking cohorts as students become, you know, they're five years, not four, they change schools, et cetera. But I'm trying to get a sense of, of these areas that the audits uncovered challenges. If they can, if, if the folks in data who work on this can try to translate that for us to what does this mean? At our graduation rate, if this is a problem, and obviously it is, because let's not forget, everyone is an individual student, and we recognize that. But are we talking that this changed our graduation rate by 10 points? What did this change our graduation rate by a tenth of a point? And I'm using that as two extremes. I'm just trying to understand the scale of, you know, what this means. Because I don't want to rely strictly on, well, they found it six out of 40. Forty was the sample that they took to look at a bigger cohort. So just trying to understand that, superintendent. If you could give us a sense, and I, and I recognize the difficulties in trying to track it. But I'm trying to put it into a context.
It was because I knew the sample size, Mr. O'Neill was so small, you know, out of the, out of the kids who were unknowns, which is a small group of students. I was thinking the exact same thing as you, and I asked my team about that. And so I don't know if Monica Hogan is on, who could maybe speak to the difficulty? And just kind of I tried in my superintendent's report to talk a little bit about the cohort and how the whole cohort is created and the difficulty each year of kids going in and out and how you would have to be able to track that. And, and so I'm going to ask Monica if she might be able to just share a little bit more to answer your question on, you know, just the effect size basically of, of these, this number of students on an overall graduation rate. Like, what would seven students do to a graduation rate, you know?
Well, well, but superintendent, just to clarify, excuse me, Ms. Hogan, and I'm looking forward to your answer. But the seven was out of the 40 that the, according to the Globe, that the independent auditors looked at. That's just a sample size of students that did not graduate.
Yeah, of the unknowns, which is probably.
Of the unknown students, right. So not, I don't want to concentrate on the 40, because seven out of 40, you know, is, is close to 15%. You know, it, it, that translate up. So Ms. Hogan would understand this much better than I would. I'm sorry, I'm not more clear in my question.
Good evening, and I may have missed part of your question, Mr. O'Neill, so feel free to stop me if I'm sort of off-base here. But essentially, the, one of the things that the auditors state in their audit is that they are not looking at a statistically valid sample. So because of that, we can't really extrapolate from that seven out of 40 to apply that percentage to the larger cohort. So it's, it's not, we can't quite say that it's like a tenth of a percentage point or 10 percentage points solely based off of that sample. The, the other complicating factor with the way the audit is conducted and the way a graduation rate cohort works is that the cohort is looking at a group of students over a four-year period of time. And so you enter as ninth graders, move to 10th grade, move to 11th grade, move to 12th grade. The audit is looking at students across grades nine through 12 in a single year. So that seven out of 40 students might have been in different graduation cohorts. So they're not necessarily all part of the same cohort impacting that single graduation rate. So it's a, it's a, it's a very complex calculation and challenging question to answer definitively that this would have been, you know, 0.1 percentage points or 10 percentage points, to use your example. Does that help?
It does, and particularly the piece that it's, you know, it's across various ages. So it's not, you know, 15%, and therefore, you know, 15% of the students who didn't graduate. I get back to what Mr. Cardad Hernandez said, which is, this is about trust and transparency in numbers that BPS. This is an example of trust in numbers that BPS put in, put out. And believe me, I am extraordinarily sensitive to how challenging it is to have accurate data here. And, and also the incredible work this district does to reach out to dropouts and students who are not with us and try to get them services. Again, talk to the folks at the re-engagement center, the superintendent herself and many members of the senior team who are out knocking on doors in September, encouraging students to come back. I mean, this district does enormous work. In fact, we're a national leader in reaching out to dropouts and getting them to come back into the system. But we have to also work to have faith in the numbers. And, and for some of the newer members, I do appreciate the superintendent talking about the risk management offices. In fact, this school committee put and encouraged the district to put in place management practices instead of, in effect, outsourcing it to the city. And, you know, with the size budget that we have, we should have risk management practices within our own district. And the superintendent, to her credit, has been supportive of that, has funded it in the budget. And I'll be interested, and I will ask a further question about that during the budget process. But I think now, this is a clear example of why we need to have a full court press to find qualified candidates to fill those positions. Reach back out to the folks from internal audit specialists and private practice and academia who helped us with the policy, to put in place a policy and use their networks to try to find qualified candidates. And this is to build trust and transparency. That's the reason we put that policy in place. And I applaud the superintendent for continuing to fund it, but we really have to get those positions filled. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. One other thing, I wonder if Mark Racine might want to just talk about the documentation piece? Mr. Racine?
Yeah, so as, as the superintendent mentioned, one year, seven students were flagged as the auditor, from the auditors out of a group of 40. So one could take that number and say, well, let's just magnify that up. But the clarification that I do want to make is that the seven students that were removed from the cohort, the auditor said the documentation is not sufficient, but it doesn't mean that the wrong withdrawal code was used. So if a student moves out of the country, you get a notification from mom and dad saying, you know, we're, we're leaving the country, the auditors are saying, I need a copy of the plane ticket. Well, we didn't, we didn't get that documentation. It doesn't mean that the student didn't move out of the country. It does not mean that the wrong withdrawal code was used. It simply means that the documentation doesn't pass muster for the auditors. So it's very hard to even apply that small section, that small cohort of seven out of 40, to ply that up. Because all seven could still be valid withdrawal codes used, just without the right documentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? Mr. Cardad Hernandez? You're still on mute. He's still muted, yeah.
You know, when your like mouse gets stuck, that's, that was my life. So I just have one more question, and I think this matters in this moment. And so I just want to say this, I think some of these questions can be answered long-term with the, the, the sort of internal mechanisms and controls that we talked about. But there is a piece here, I think, just to be fair, if I was, as a parent watching and part of this, but if I was at home also engaging in this conversation. There is, we do have a way of running our own internal audit and showing families and stakeholders the percentage of documentation that was. and showing families and stakeholders the percentage of documentation that was wrong relationship to we have the possibility to show the percentage of documentation that was right, even if the code uh that was used was correct. And I think again, like that sort of transparency right now, given everything the system is facing, could serve us well, so.
Appreciate, appreciate, appreciate that feedback and noted. And I think that that is absolutely a task of the risk management office and our team, and we will get on that. Um, and I've already asked my team to start um looking at other ways in which we can better represent this data so that we can be sure that the public is getting, you know, the the most accurate data and um and we can rebuild and cultivate that trust.
Okay, and and I will, last thing here, I will also say, having been a principal, I have been in the situation where I am plugging in a student having moved, because I know that kid moved and I've talked to that family and that family didn't have email and couldn't send me a plane ticket. So like both can be true, but that's again, it's just about trust and making sure folks know that when we say a graduation rate is what it is, that that we're doing it honestly. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Superintendent and team for the report. Um, my question, I appreciate the conversation that's been taking place around the high school graduation pieces. Mine is around the registration, um, school registration that's currently happening for certain grades. Um, and especially given the announcement last week around some grade reconfigurations for some specific school communities. Um, and so given that, uh, I'd like to hear um just what supports are being offered to communities such as the King and the Trotter um around uh the transition uh for um their seventh and eighth grade experience moving forward. And then additionally, because it isn't just a an elimination of grades, but it's also an opportunity to bring in younger students um at the other end, right, in the K zero, K one space. Um, given that we're at the tail end of registration, I'm curious to understand how that is now showing up, that opportunity, both at the King and the Trotter, are showing up for families who are looking to engage in a K zero, K one spot uh for next year.
So um Ms. LaPera, I do not have the information regarding the early childhood um seats, but I will definitely get that for you. As for the seventh and eighth grade, um, the principal principals are um have identified a transition coordinator who is working directly with our welcome services office and meeting with families, meeting with students um and making sure that they get their choices, that they're aware of their choices um and that they're getting the information from the um from the additional high schools that are available to them in their choices. So I don't know if Megan Costello or if Denise is on the line, who can share anything further on that. But um I believe that that's where we're at with with the Trotter and the King.
Yeah, Superintendent, that's that's correct. Um, they're actually having a additional meeting tonight. They've met earlier this week with parents and are doing another meeting tonight and continuing to call through everybody as well to support them.
And so just as a follow up around the, appreciate that that's happening. Um, I also had an opportunity to um participate or listen in on a conversation yesterday with the um Burke School about the opportunities that already exist there, um, and how that will be available to seventh and eighth graders um as well as the connections that already exist between some of the schools, which was new information for me to hear. So I was happy to hear about the community building that's been happening for several years. Um, the piece around the early childhood, are we saying that for next year those, that expansion will exist at those earlier grades in those schools? Or is that more forward thinking, just because I know registration is happening now, so want to get a clear understanding on that?
Um, Mr. Cooter, do you want to talk about their grades? I don't think we've expanded uh early childhood. They do have early childhood there, I believe, but I don't think that we've expanded it. It's a plan and vision for K eights, once the seventh and eighth come off, to be able to then expand into uh lower grades if we, if possible. Do you want to speak to that, Nate?
Yeah, I would just add, um, in terms of the the K one programming, early childhood programming at those schools, because those are existing programs, families would have already seen them on their choice list and would have already been able to evaluate um those options. And so that gives us the opportunity, as registration come in, to look at the number of registrations, the number of families demanding those seats and adjust capacity if necessary. The rush on the seventh and eighth grade, by contrast, we want to get that out, we want to communicate with families, because those are new choices and new options for families that they wouldn't have seen before. Um, so um it's it's really difficult to get a sense of what families would have demanded um if that were an option. So I think that that's a big differentiation. And the other piece that I would just add is the superintendent has been talking about pre-K expansion, not just about K one expansion, but how we might begin to start thinking about K zero expansion in neighborhoods and schools where we have enough K one capacity um to meet the needs. And and our demand for K one, and and certainly we can come back and talk about it more if it's the interest of the committee. But the demand for K one is not evenly distributed across the city in terms of where we have a mismatch of of capacity and demand.
So the K, K one already exists in those communities. So we're not necessarily saying that we're automatically adding a K zero, for example, to those spaces for next year. We're saying that that is a possibility for some school communities if there is a shift. Um, but that at this time, for those particular two school communities, we're looking at K one demand based on the current enrollment. But K zero is not a given in that space. K zero is not guaranteed across the city, but hopefully at some point we uh work towards that.
Yeah, certainly, and our priority is to meet the universal pre-K guarantee across the city as well. And so um that's correct, we're not planning to add K zero capacity at those schools for next fall. Uh, but we'll continue to evaluate demand and the appropriate programming um at each of those schools.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
And currently, three-year-olds are not funded um by the state or by the city, four-year-olds are, correct, Nate? Unless it's an early childhood special education student, is that correct?
We have a limited number of K zero um general education seats. Um, it's it's pretty limited across the city, but it's mostly to create inclusive opportunities for our K zero special education programming as well. Um, but that's, I think it's somewhere around two hundred seats um citywide.
Other questions? I have one question about the um seventh grade. I know that um the Grove Hall Alliance had been working over time with the um high, with the schools, basically, um, the Trotter, the King, um, and the Burke around um this idea of transitioning to um seven to twelves and eliminating the sixth day, the seventh and eighth grades at the two elementary schools. I guess my question still remains about parents and on their both knowledge and participation in those earlier conversations. And what has been the impact as um this announcement has come out in the last couple of weeks? Um, how are both students and families at the elementary school caring and thinking about this? And what particular um supports are being put in place for the, well, the sixth graders who would be seventh and not now not at where they thought they were going to be, as well as the um seventh graders who will become eighth graders? Um, can you talk a little bit more about that experience in the um context of of parents?
Yes, as as noted, and it's a good question. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. You know, uh, Dr. McIntyre was on talking about the Grove Hall Alliance at the last meeting, talking about the innovation plan that was submitted to myself um about the expansion and the grade expansion that uh like Ms. LaPera said she heard last night, has been talked about for quite a while. Um, and so they have um been uh working with families. Now, I think Ms. Costello just talked a little bit about the work that they've been doing with families, and she probably can speak, speak to it a little bit uh more than I directly. And so they're getting the transition support, meeting with the families, meeting with individual families uh or students in grade six and seven. Um, and so I don't know, Megan, if you can share any other qualitative kind of um data or thoughts about uh what you're hearing from families and students?
Sure, and um and Denise would be here tonight. She's going to be joining school committee a little bit later, but she's actually meeting with the families from the King and Trotter uh at this moment, so she can't be here right now. Um, you know, I think Chair, one of the things that's very important to the superintendent is making sure we are talking to families, engaging with families. Um, they have been, it's my understanding that they have been part of the Grove Hall Alliance. Um, but one of the things that's very important to us, as we have made this announcement last week, is supporting the families that might have expected to be at the King or Trotter next year and now having a shift in that um experience for their student. So the team at Welcome Services um had put together meetings for families. They have called through and are continuing to call through until they get parents on the phone. Um, they dropped off, you know, uh, the the paperwork that we fill out to uh select schools. They dropped those off um the next day with updated forms for students. Um, it's updated online, you know, really, and I think also the superintendent spoke about the transition coordinator um that we have for each of the schools as well. So we know that this might be um a challenging time, but we also, I think the superintendent has spoken about the urgency of this moment um in making sure that we are providing our students with the best experience possible. And we know that those students are going to have enriching experiences um in seventh and eighth grade at at one of our expanded schools.
Okay, thank you. I'll be happy to hear updates as this goes along about what families' experiences are, or kids' questions as well. Thank you. Ms. Ms. Lau?
I just have a question about whether or not you guys have connected with the student leaders in those schools, because I know there's a focus on the seventh and eighth transition into those schools. But I do worry about like the current high schoolers that are in those schools as well. Um, I was wondering if you guys are going to be in conversation with the high school leaders, such as the BSAC leaders at those schools, and see how we can also make sure that transition is comfortable for the current students there.
That's a great, great question, um, Ms. Lau. And um, you know, I know that Dr. Mac also spoke of this, and so did Mr. Silva, and how they already have programs where the high school students are very connected with the King School um and that they do activities and they do activities in the summer and after school, and they do um tutoring and things. So um I will bring that back to uh Mr. Silva and make sure that uh he is aware that that was a request for the BSAC to get involved, if they're not already involved.
Thank you.
Are there any final questions? If there's no further discussion, I will now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Very none, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Captain Walkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LaPera?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have fourteen speakers for general public comment. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. And please make sure that you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. Be state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please unmute yourself and turn on your camera when it's your turn to testify. Only speakers who turn on their camera will be allowed to testify. Otherwise, speakers can submit their testimony in writing. We'll begin this evening with our students. Beginning with Brandon Michelle, Francesca Jean T., Adriana Wade Smith, Claire Malcolm, Darius Anderson, and Navon Anderson. If you can please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. That will help identify, help us to identify you. Brandon? Okay, Brandon and Francesca are not with us. So we'll move on to our next speaker. Adriana?
I'm a third grader in the P A Shaw, and my name is Adriana. I love the P A Shaw because all the teachers and kids are really kind. I want a fourth grade, a fifth grade, and a sixth grade, so we can stay here for a little longer. It would help us stay together and not break us up. And this is important because you know it's COVID nineteen, so we didn't get to come to school in person in second grade. This meant that we didn't get to see our friends in person last year and play at recess. And now that we get to learn in person, I don't want it to change and leave my teachers and friends behind. So and also uh, we've been learning about Black Lives Matter and how Rosa Parks and how Rosa Parks fight for the right to be able to sit in front of the bus and not be treated unfairly. And Black Lives Matter Week at the P A Shaw, we're learning about people who fought for something at a young age, like Ruby Bridges. So I think you should talk to our principal, Ms. Davis, and talk about having a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade to see what you could do. Thank you. That's the end.
Thanks, Adriana. It looks like Brandon Michelle is now with us. Brandon? Brandon, are you there? Okay, we're not hearing Brandon. Let's try Francesca. Can you please unmute yourself? Francesca? Francesca?
Dear Superintendent Cusellius and members of this school committee, do you care about what is best for students in our community? If so, please help our school grow to sixth grade. Hi, my name is Francesca. I've been in this school for three years now, and I'm seven years old. This school is really important to our community. The P A Shaw should go up to sixth grade because this school is fun and educational. I'm only in second grade, but I'm learning some amazing things. For example, I know how to chapter ten more. I also have learned about immigration and sex and other cool things. I just know that when we get older, we will learn even better things. The P A Shaw is a neighborhood school. Most students live so close to the school that they can walk there, like me. This is important because we are a true community in and out of the school. My brother, on the other hand, is at a school that's further away from our house, so my mom has to drive to drive to his school. That makes mornings a little bit harder for him. However, for me, it's super easy. Lastly, I and lots of other people love this school. This is, this small and close community helps me in a lot of ways. I would be disappointed to leave my community if I didn't have to. I would, I just want to stay with them until my, until sixth grade. In conclusion, the P A Shaw should go up to sixth grade, and we need your help to make this happen. Please start by adding a fourth grade class in our school next year. Sincerely, Francesca.
Thank you. Let's try Brandon one last time. Brandon? Can you unmute yourself, please? Okay, let's try Claire Malcolm. Claire?
Can you hear us?
Hi.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm trying to, I, oh. Hi, so I'm speaking on behalf of Claire. I'm her mother, and she is right here. So my name is Claire, and I'm eight years old. This is my second year at the P A Shaw. I used to go to a different school and a different place, and I had a hard time learning there. I didn't really make friends when I was there. I was actually bullied a lot. My mom tried many schools, but none of them worked for me. Sometimes I felt like my brain was turned off. I didn't know what to do, and I would get in trouble. Then my mom put me at the P A Shaw. I started off learning on Zoom because the school wasn't open, but I was learning better. Then when kids would come back to the school, I learned even better. In my opinion, the P A Shaw should go all the way up to the sixth grade, please. I want to stay at the P A Shaw because I have made so many friends here, and I want to stay with them. I like this school because they treat me better than other schools. I have been too. I have learned so much here. I have learned a lot of math, and I'm really good at it. For example, I know how to count all the way to a hundred and how to add friendly tens. I'm still working on my reading, but I have many teachers that help me with it. It makes me feel smart and powerful to get better at learning, and the P A Shaw is helping me feel this way. The P A Shaw shouldn't just go up to sixth grade. It should go all the way up to college. That's what she said. We really need your help. Please help our school, which is like heaven to me. Go to sixth grade, please.
Thank you. Our next speakers are Darius Anderson and Navon Anderson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you guys see us and hear us?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, all you guys. This is Navon, and he'll be speaking.
Hi, my name is Navon, and hi, my name is Navon, and I'm a third grader at the P A Shaw. I love my school because I have nice memories. For example, me and my friend Andrew made a memory box to go with our poem that we were performing. We want a fourth, fifth, and a sixth grade because we want to stay with our friends even longer. If we have to leave our school, you will crush our dreams, and we will have to leave our friends. We have special things. We won't have like dancing and ballet rock. Therefore, I, I think you should add a fourth grade to our school. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andersons. We will now move on to our speakers who will be using interpretation services. I will now turn off the interpretation icon. Interpreters and the public will all be in the main room. Interpreters, please stop interpreting and mute yourself for this part of the testimony. Ms. Polanco Garcia will receive the interpretation via phone because the interpretation is not going to be in Spanish. I'll invite our Cabo Verdean interpreter to please support our next speaker, Claudia Fernandez.
Yes. Buenoite, señora Claudia Fernandez? Señora Claudia Fernandez, ¿nieta podio vino? Hello? Señora Claudia Fernandez, ¿nieta podio vino? Hello? Señora Claudia Fernandez, ¿a mi enterte de criollo? ¿Señora, está podio vino? Okay, I was explaining to her to speak slow so I can pass the message correct. Okay, ¿nieta por comenzar, señora Claudia? Okay, obrigado. Yes, I'm so happy. I've been, I've been agree with most of the, the the ideas you guys bring today to the meeting, but I want to tell you guys, for that to work, we guys need to work together as a team. Yeah. Well, I'm so proud that I have my two sons in their school. And if you see, if you guys gonna shut down their school, it's gonna be very hard for them, not only because their school provide such a good work, not only for the student, but for the community as well. For example, if you see people that don't have a good financial assistant, their school is very important on those people's lives. So if you guys close those schools, you guys, basically, I can say that you guys is closing a poor family as well. Yeah, I want, I want, I want this to be very clear. Like, when you guys gonna, gonna decide, I don't want you guys to decide for what you guys think is best for our kids. I want you guys to give us opportunity for us to be part in this decision. Because the way you guys want to decide, I believe you guys think what is better for you guys. But I want to ask you guys, what is better for our kids? So if we all can come together as a, as a community, as a team, I'm sure we can bring a lot of good ideas and we can share the best with our kids. I know it's, I know it's very hard, and I pray every night for God to guide you guys and to, to take what is the best decision and what is best for our community as well. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers for interpretation. I will now activate the interpretation icon. All interpreters will be sent to your channels, and you can begin interpreting again. Thank you. We're gonna go back to Mr. Anderson, who I think was cut off earlier and wanted to add his own testimony to his son. Mr. Anderson, are you with us?
Hi, everyone. Yes, I am with you guys.
Good evening.
How are you? So, you know, I work in healthcare industry. I actually work at Beth Israel. And the school that Navon is in, you know, we've moved around a few times. The P A Shaw has been huge for our family. I think, you know, I think someone else spoke on this. It's a community school. There's a lot of people who live very close in proximity to the, to the school. So, you know, also me being a single dad, it plays a huge role for me to be able to know, you know, if there's an emergency or I need to get to the school, you know, for, you know, for emergency purposes, or just to be able to get there to support that, you know, I'm really close by. I, I think, you know, I've seen Navon and our youngest son that's also in the school in Neville. I've seen them prosper in the school, and the teachers are amazing, you know. And I, I think there's so much going on in the world with COVID and, you know, them just coming back from online learning to separate them and put them in a new environment may not be the best thing for the kids at this time. You know, so I, I just speak, I just wanted to say that, you know, a quick thing, I feel that, you know, with everything going on, the P A Shaw is probably the best place for the kids to remain for the time being. You know, I feel like the longer they're in the school, the more familiar they get with the teachers and the staff. The, the, you know, stronger the bond, they can build those teachers and staff as they move forward in their, their young lives. So I definitely want to make that statement.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Mike Heishman, Dominique Alston, Sabine Ferdinand, and Edith Bazile. If you could, please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Mr. Heishman?
Mike Heishman, Dorchester, Beja. Imagine for a moment that every school in Boston would be equivalent to schools in wealthy, in the wealthy suburbs. It would take many years and billions of dollars. Build BPS has more modern schools. Any program to modernize and repair our facilities should be recent to celebrate. Excuse me for a second. Spam. I'm sorry, lost my train. Why does Build BPS continue to be a big mess and create so much misery? No new schools have been built or even be in the planning stage since the initiation of this program many years ago. Schools continue to be closed. Our children are continued to be shuffled around, and our children and their families are continued to be confused and disheartened. The latest surprising news was announced at the last school committee meeting on January twenty-sixth. Two K through eight schools in Dorchester, the King and Trotter, in the heart of the African-American community, were suddenly told that their K eight, K through eight school would be transformed into K through grade six schools starting this September. Both schools knew the changes were coming, but why weren't they given more notice? Why not September twenty-twenty-two? The eighth graders in both schools knew for years that they would be graduating this June and would have to apply to a new high school. Now, at this last moment, the sixth and seventh graders and your families have to suddenly look for new schools. For God's sake, we are still in a pandemic. Our children and their families have enough stress in their lives. Now some teachers will need to find new jobs. The school committee wants to support our superintendent. However, you must immediately prevent central office from making major decisions for school communities before significant involvements of parents, students, educators, and other staff have taken place. I want to see the racial equity analysis for this decision. I strongly oppose steps by Desi to put our school system into further receivership. State receivership have made matters worse and will continue to do so if allowed to continue in the future. There are powerful forces, mostly outside our city, including Desi and the Boston Globe, who want this to happen. Thank you, Dr. Cusellius, for responding to the Globe article. That puts things in much, much better perspective. However, I want to repeat, we're dealing with powerful forces who want to take over our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dominique Alston.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Boston School Committee. My name is Dominique Alston, and I currently have two grandchildren that go to the P A Shaw school. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts about the P A Shaw. I would like to ask that, I would like to ask the school committee to consider that the children in the special needs program at the P A Shaw have a right to continue their education in the same school that they started. Right now, children in the special needs class can only stay in the school from K zero to K one when they are five. Many children are told they cannot stay at the school anymore. Change is often very upsetting to children on a spectrum. Adding an inclusion class would ease their education process. It would also allow parents not to worry about where their child will be placed. Like I said, I have two grandchildren at the P A Shaw, one on the spectrum and one in general education, kindergarten class. It is very important to me and their mom that they can continue to be at the same school. The Shaw's program all around is what made me happy with their placement. Student and families who love the Shaw Students and families who love the Shaw, including students with special needs, should not need to leave the school because of decisions of the school district. Our school deserves an inclusion program as well as a fourth and fifth grade and a sixth grade, as many have discussed, so that students can remain with their school and not have to make many changes in the transitions. Think about COVID and the depression that these kids go through. The one thing that they don't want to have to face is losing all their friends and having to build new friendships because a lot of kids don't have a lot of the social skills that need to build that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sabine Ferdinand.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabine Ferdinand and I'm a second grade teacher at the P A Shaw school. I'm here today to urge you to support the P A Shaw in its mission to serve the community of Dorchester and Mattapan by turning our school into a single strand K to six inclusion school. There is clear indication that BPS's ultimate goal is to close down the Shaw yet again. This matter is not just a school-specific issue. This is a social justice issue for our community. Studies have shown that school closures disproportionately affect low-income students of color. And our school primarily serves these types of students. The Shaw's enrollment would be strong if it was not for BPS's failures and broken promises. I was sitting in the library that day when BPS announced that it would not be adding more classrooms to our school, more grade levels to our school, despite previously promising that they would. This made families feel like they were deceived and ultimately lost trust in BPS. This year, I've had the pleasure of teaching a student whose grandfather attended the Shaw for elementary school. One afternoon at dismissal, he explained to me and his granddaughter the layout of the school when he was there, what the classrooms were served for. And at the end of his, you know, chat with us, he acknowledged one thing to his granddaughter. He said, "You're learning things that I didn't learn when I was your age." That pride that the grandfather had in his granddaughter and her education here in the Shaw is not only reflective of the hard work that educators at the school put into making curriculum culturally relevant and rigorous, but also how the Shaw is a pillar of strength and beacon of hope in this community. We are providing future generations the tools they need to make our community and world better. In these past few weeks, you have heard first through third graders provide a testimony about the impact the Shaw has had on them. Watching your faces, I can tell that you've been moved by our students. It is evident that the small school on the corner in Morton in Norfolk is producing some high-quality students. And I don't want to brag, but a few of them were mine tonight. After hearing the feedback from my children and families, we hope that you, Superintendent Casellius and members of the school committee will make the decision to preserve, not further tear down our school as a step towards building back the BPS that the Dorchester, Mattapan community deserves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sharon Hinton, followed by Salika Soto and Cheryl Buckman. If you could please raise your hands in Zoom. Oh, excuse me, Edith Bazile, I'm sorry, I called you earlier. Ms. Bazile, are you still with us?
Thank you so much, evening. Black history is more than billboards, banquet banners, hashtags, and slogans. We are not a month-long campaign. We are American history. Black history means acknowledging the royalty of African people who were kidnapped and enslaved for centuries, then forced to build the economic foundation of this country on their brutalized backs. The root of racism is anti-blackness, which is used to justify, bury, minimize, and deny the ongoing historical mistreatment of black people without atonement, healing, or reparations. Black history means celebrating black resilience and resistance, the unrelenting fight for liberation before, during, and after the civil rights era that made the promise of democracy a reality for immigrants, non-black people, disability groups, and the LGBT community. Black people were murdered seeking educational equity and racial justice while also fighting for all of these groups. Black history means telling the truth about the gifts, inventions, creations of black intellect that touches the lives of everyone in every vocation and profession today. Ayanna Pressley said it well. Those closest to the pain should be closest to the power. Rita Pearson, a black educator and author, said, "Every child deserves a champion who understands the power of connection." This year, the White House issued a proclamation on national black history committing to, quote, "building a federal government that looks like America," end of quote. Yet, on the first day of Black History Month, BPS made an abrupt announcement appointing three more white key senior policymakers, making BPS whiter than in past decades. In the midst of escalating bomb threats to HBCUs, racial discrimination in the NFL, and attacks on black voting rights, what message does that send? Well, I don't need to say that it does not meet the standard for holding yourself accountable for becoming an anti-racist institution. How can BPS transform schools like the McKinley, Charles Town High, Madison Park, and so many others where newly hired white senior leaders have no connection to black communities, no knowledge of historical segregation and racism in Boston public schools? Black students are the most historically abused, neglected, blamed, and miseducated population of students in this system. I implore you to stop ignoring black students who are begging you not to close their schools like the P A Shaw. Stop blocking black leaders from key policymaking positions and start making lame excuses for not fulfilling the Garrity order. The Garrity order. BPS must adopt a black agenda now and stop using us as props for Black History Month because black students can't wait. When black students gain access, everyone benefits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Hinton.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Hinton, mother, educator, community advocate, and president of Black Teachers Matter Incorporated. I'm testifying this evening to be that voice in the wilderness, warning of impending doom regarding the MOU signed by Commissioner Riley and Superintendent Casellius, March 2020, outlining the conditions and defining state receivership and takeover the Boston Public Schools. If you're paying attention, the groundwork has already been set to put BPS under the supervision of Desi, who doesn't have any better track record regarding teachers, students, or parents in Boston. The MOU stipulations regard student achievement, improvements in practices and policies for students with disabilities, ELL, among other concerns. Since the signing of the MOU, things haven't gotten better, they've gotten worse. Today's Boston Globe article cited five to seven years of misreporting graduation rates by BPS pre-this administration, but also during this administration, as an indication BPS should be commandeered by Desi and meeting the MOU requirements is on BPS, not just Desi, although the remedies must include both. Seven years ago, in another urban school system, black teachers in Atlanta faced 25 years of imprisonment for changing school grades. What should the consequences be for BPS for misrepresenting graduation rates if it's indeed substantiated? In addition to that scenario, is the dysfunctional COVID safety protocol in rollout after over two years of death and disease? There's pending terminations of approximately 400 black teachers who are unvaccinated. The RC counseling scandal and student walkouts, which have added to a narrative of an already dysfunctional miseducation system, along with the revolving door of Boston School Committee members. All of this information doesn't bode well for the BPS superintendent or school committee's report cards and should be a warning sign to anyone who's really paying attention. Job performance reviews and terminations to hold people accountable need to be considered. As a matter of fact, people have lost their jobs for less. After over 90,000 voters decided to support an elected school committee, Desi is now poised to take control and undercut the voice of and power of teachers, parents, students, voters, and the democratic process by threatening to take over. And do you expect us to stand by while this happens? I won't, and I'm not alone. Please do your jobs. I know it's hard, but you're getting paid. You're not alone. And if you don't do your jobs, pretty soon you won't have one. There are people like the former Orchard Gardens principal and current elementary school superintendent Grace Way. She and anyone like her have to be held accountable for their racist comments and actions forcing out black teachers. We must support black teachers because they matter. Representation matters, and they always will to all students' education if you truly believe in education equity and justice. Along with celebrating black history this month, celebrate teachers this month and every month because being black doesn't go away during the other 337 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Salika Soto has not signed into the meeting, so we'll move on to our next speaker, Cheryl Buckman.
Good evening. Can you hear, all hear me pretty good?
Yes, we can.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Buckman. I'm a parent of a third-grade student who attends the Deva Elementary, and I live in South Boston. My son suffers from physical and emotional impairments. Currently, since the COVID surge, my son had to miss 10 days of school in late September due to be in a close contact and developing symptoms. As a responsible parent, I kept him home. And now, since then, he's at risk of not passing the third grade. With the recent surge of the Omicron, he doesn't feel safe at school. In the lunch area, he says everyone sits very close, making it very uncomfortable. He is also very afraid of catching COVID and infecting his family. It is not fair that at this time the children feel like they are risking and having to choose between either their health or their education. This should never be a thought that crosses my child or any child's mind. Choosing between my child's education or health should not be a choice that I, as a parent, should make. What we need is options, guidance, and flexible plans designed for how COVID is affecting us at the present time and in the future. Students need support instead of being penalized for absences. At this time, BPS must guarantee a safe environment for families whose children need in-person learning while giving support for students at home instead of being penalized for them absence, for those absences. I know that BPS is committed for the safety of children, teachers, and staff. I believe there are further productive measures that can be taken to ensure safety for all. Pool testing should be completed twice a week and results given within 24 hours. Quick identification on rapid tests if a positive test occur. Providing N95 masks for all teachers, staff, and students. Guarantee all schools have proper ventilations and filtration in every lunch area for students that are having meals. Proper supports in place if an outbreak occurs. For those students that have missed school due to COVID-related reasons and concerns, don't enforce the policy that will penalize them for missing more than 18 days in a school year. I appreciate the time and effort the school board puts into making sure our children, teachers, and staff are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. We have no action items this evening, so we will move on to our first report, English Language Learner Task Force nominations. Tonight, I am pleased to formally nominate two appointees to the Boston School Committee's English Language Learners, ELL Task Force. First, I nominate committee member Rafaelo Polanco Garcia to serve as Task Force co-chair alongside long-term co-chair Suzanne Lee. Ms. Polanco Garcia will fulfill the leadership role formerly held by Hernani DeRouge, whose school committee term expired in January. I also nominate Roxy Harvey, Chair of the Boston Special Education Parent Advisory Council's FedPAC as a member of the ELL Task Force. Ms. Polanco Garcia is a BPS parent and immigrant with a background in law and bilingual advocacy. Her activism on behalf of the Latinx community in education includes working on the No On Too Campaign in 2016, helping to pass the Sanctuary Schools Resolution, and passing the Student Opportunity Act. Since 2015, she has served as the Director of Parent Engagement and Organizing at St. Stephen's Youth Programs in the South End. Ms. Harvey is a BPS parent who has served as Chair of FedPAC since 2019, representing more than 10,000 BPS students with disabilities. She has been participating in ELL Task Force meetings as a member of the public for over a year, bringing her vast knowledge of special education issues. Established by the school committee in 2009, the ELL Task Force serves as a monitoring body and thought partner that supports BPS in addressing the needs of our increasingly multicultural and multilingual district. Nearly one in every two students speaks a language other than English at home, and students come from over 139 different countries. With their personal and professional experience, Ms. Polanco Garcia and Ms. Harvey will both be valuable additions to the ELL Task Force. I want to thank Ms. Polanco Garcia for stepping up to take on this important role. And thanks as well to Ms. Harvey for her willingness to serve. Ms. Polanco Garcia, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Y para mí es una gran oportunidad y abre para mí la, la puerta para tantos y tantas personas que como yo que son aprendices del idioma inglés dentro del sistema educativo.
It is a great opportunity for me. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This opportunity certainly opens up doors for me and for many persons in Boston that are in my same situation. It's an open-door opportunity for everybody.
Soy una usuaria de primera mano porque llegué en el 2015 con menos inglés que el que tengo ahora, con mi niño que tampoco sabía inglés. O sea que estar en esa posición, ustedes están enfrente a una persona que ha vivido el sistema, que, que ha convivido con las fortalezas y debilidades que tiene el sistema.
I'm a first-time user. Actually, I did arrive in 2015. I did arrive with my son, so I embed, actually, I epitomize in firsthand, the first person, the person that is actually living in the circumstances in the system. It is me that I embody this.
Quiero decirle a las familias que los entiendo. Los entiendo de primera mano. Sé lo que pueden estar viviendo. Sé lo que es llegar a una escuela donde no sepan, donde no sepan tu idioma.
I know what the families are going through. I know what you're living through. I know what you're going through. I know what it feels to go into a school and not being able to speak the language because it is not the language that you speak.
Espero que poder llegar a todos, a todas las comunidades, a todas las nacionalidades, y que sepan que a mí van a tener una persona que va a luchar con ustedes para promover mejores procesos, mejores planes, y sistemas de mejora para nuestros aprendizajes del idioma inglés.
I would like to reach every community. I would like to reach every nationality, possibly. I would like to say that I am the person that will embody this improvement. We're talking about different processes. We're talking about incorporating and implementing different planning and the systems that are to be allocated to make this happen. I'm willing to reach every community, every nationality. I'm willing to reach every community, every nationality.
Quiero subrayar finalmente que agradezco mucho, que he recibido muchas cartas, y muchos padres, maestros, y miembros de organizaciones están escribiendo en inglés y en español, y eso para mí lo valoro mucho porque están aceptando mucho la inclusión, y eso es importante, poder ver que ellos están pensando en los dos idiomas.
I do have to acknowledge as well that I have received multiple letters, not only one in one language, but in English and Spanish, from parents, from teachers, and from multiple different organizations, which is very comforting to know that they are actually acknowledging that both languages exist. And that reinforces the concept of inclusion.
Muchas gracias, y aquí estoy para todos y todas.
Thank you very much. I am here to work for each and all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Please raise your hands if you'd like to make a comment. Ms. LaPera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And if I may, I'm just going to take the opportunity to say this in Spanish for Member Polanco Garcia. Felicidades, señora Polanco Garcia. Es, en realidad, para mí un honor seguir aprendiendo contigo y saber que nuestras familias y nuestros jóvenes están en buenas manos con tu representación y con tu experiencia como madre, con tu experiencia con tu hijo en este sistema. Entonces, felicidades y muchas gracias por por tomar este mando. And I will translate for myself, so folks know. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Member Polanco Garcia. This is a momentous occasion, and I am grateful for her leadership to step into this role, knowing that she has this lived experience as a mother, as a person herself who continues to be a multilingual learner. And I know that our students, I know that our families, I know that our community is in good hands with this advocate at the helm, so thank you for stepping into this role.
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
I'm just like everyone else. I just want to congratulate you only in my my brief time here, but certainly this particular population like within BPS signifies one of the most marginalized communities that we do serve. And so this is a wonderful opportunity for for you and for the community of Boston to be empowered. And I certainly know that you will be committed to that change, making sure that there is bilingual supports, native language supports, making sure that there's a strategic operation plan in place that actually lays out how we are going to improve the situation over the next few years and permanently. And all I can say is congratulations, and however I can personally help, please let me know.
Thank you. Ms. Lau?
I would just like to congratulate Ms. Garcia. I've been a student in BPS that went through the ESL programs. I relate to like coming to America and being in a school and not speaking the language at all or understanding anything completely lost. And these programs are the ones that really helps me learn English and connect with people in my community. And I really hope you're able to spread more of those resources to our students and our growing population of multicultural students. I really congratulate you on that and appreciate you for all your work.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to applaud you for the appointments that you've made to Ms. Roxy Harvey. Thank you for your leadership on the FedPAC. And it will be very important to have your voice on this ELL Task Force, which is such an important task force. So thank you for Ms. Ms. Harvey's continuing willingness to step up and help BPS for a very important population. And to my colleague, señora Polanco Garcia, gracias por su liderazgo. I believe I will translate. I'm trying to say thank you for your leadership. I studied French, not Spanish, in my time at Boston Public Schools, so I apologize if I did not say it correctly, but gracias and thank you for your willingness to lead and serve this incredibly important task force.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Mr. Carter Hernandez?
Felicidades. Nuestra comunidad tiene suerte de tenerte, and I just, you know, our community is lucky to have you. So muchas gracias por todo lo que haces, and it's just really exciting to to have you leading and to be part of your leadership. So gracias.
Yes, and I just want to add my thanks and admiration to you taking on this role. We've gotten to know each other a little bit better because of our weekly calls before school committee meetings, and I am just in awe of the work that you have done in the city and know what an amazing addition you will be to the ELL Task Force and leading by example, which is what we really need in this city and for the families and for the students as well. So thank you, and I thank Roxy too for taking on this at this time. Thank you so much. Thank you. We will take, the committee looks forward to taking action on these nominations at our next meeting. So for our new members, when we put something forward, we always vote the next meeting, so we will vote on this at our next full meeting. We will now move on to our main presentation, the Superintendent's Preliminary Fiscal Year 2023 Budget Recommendation. At this time, I'd like to invite Chief Financial Officer Nate Cooter and Deputy Superintendent of Academics Drew Eggleston to present their report. But first, I'd like to invite the Superintendent to give opening comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd just quickly like to congratulate Ms. Polanco Garcia and Ms. Roxy Harvey. We are very excited to work with you. Our OEL team is going to be hand in hand with you. So thank you so much for stepping up and doing this extra bit of work on the subcommittees. And I don't know, Brandon, you have your hand up, but do you still? Okay. I've gave most of my comments already during my superintendent report, but I'm just so very excited about this budget, and I just want to thank the team for the incredible hard work that they took putting it together. And I just want to thank our city partners, Mayor Wu and former mayors, and also the city council, who will look at this budget and go line by line and hopefully very much support it. I think this budget is a budget that is reflective of the feedback I've heard from our families and our community over the past three years on what's necessary to move our students out of this pandemic that we've had for the past two years almost now and moving into a time of recovery and where its children will thrive. So I present to you, Mr. Cooter, to present the budget.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Chairperson Robinson and members of the school committee. My name is Nathan Cooter. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, resident of Roselandale, and proud parent of two BPS students. Thank you for this opportunity this evening to present the FY twenty-three budget for the Boston Public Schools. I'm proud to present this budget on behalf of Superintendent Cassellis and our team. This one point three billion dollar budget represents a significant resource and opportunities for our students and our schools, and includes over forty million dollars in new investments. Before getting into the presentation, I want to take a moment to thank my team. This budget is the collective work of one hundred and twenty-one schools and forty-nine central office departments. To make this happen, my team has led countless hours of collaborative meetings and filled many spreadsheets with detailed cost outs. The finance team is individually and collectively responsible for the accuracy of the budget we present to you this evening. This team includes David Bloom, the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Yvonne McCray, our Director of Grants and External Funds, and our budget team, Chris Williams, Tressa Janati, Rajean Martin, Blair Dawkins, Mary Gillan, Athena Arasso, and Salam Gabreski, all who have worked tirelessly to support schools and central office departments. I owe them a debt of gratitude for helping prepare me for this evening and for helping present a budget to you that is balanced and does well for our students. I hope you don't mind if I take one moment to share some good non-financial news. You may have noticed on the previous slide that I failed to thank one member of our team, our budget director, Miriam Rubin. That's because I wanted to both thank and celebrate her. In addition to helping us deliver a one point three billion dollar budget today, on the same day, Miriam delivered her second child, her daughter Maya. Maya was born this morning, and we're excited to celebrate her as the first baby born of fiscal year twenty-three. We expect that she will follow in her mother's footsteps and will join BPS in the class of twenty forty. And of course, we will continue to monitor all birth rate data to determine if this will impact our enrollment projections for K one in fiscal year twenty-seven. Congratulations to Miriam, her husband John, and big brother Ezra. I'm once again starting my presentation with this quote from the Opportunity and Achievement Gap Policy. "It is the starting point for all our planning and therefore is a fitting starting point for tonight's presentation." "The fiscal year twenty-three budget for the Boston Public Schools is guided by the belief that every child, in every classroom, in every school deserves the same, and for some historically underserved students, even greater opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive. And as we as a district strive to ensure equity of opportunity and enact anti-racist decisions, we are called upon to maintain focus on our values and how those values are demonstrated through our budgets." "At the start of our planning, we returned to the conversation we all had in December twenty twenty, the school committee retreat. It was from this conversation and the recognition that the pandemic was having a disproportionate impact on our most vulnerable and historically marginalized students that the return, recover, and reimagine framework first emerged. At that time, I thought of these three phases in succession. First, we return, then recover, and then we move on to a reimagining phase. What we realize now is this is not linear. We're often moving between phases and iterations. Therefore, we continue to use this framework for all our FY twenty-three budget, but you won't see us moving from any one phase. We will instead ensure that we are addressing the needs of students in all three phases of our work." And with that, I want to introduce members of our academic team, Drew Eggleston, our Deputy Superintendent of Academics, and Farah Azaraj, the Deputy Chief Academic Officer, who will discuss some of the key data that inform the development of this budget.
Thank you, Nate. I think the story that Farah Azaraj and I will share is one of alignment. What we're trying to demonstrate over these next few slides is that our analysis of data across the BPS leads us to some really clear conclusions about problems that we face as a system and things that we must do better as a system to advance our students and our outcomes and opportunities for students. We'll share a little bit about each one of the problems as we see it and the data that leads us to these conclusions. And hopefully, it will be clear as we move through the presentation the way we made strategic decisions about investments that we need to make to tackle and address these problems. The first problem that we'll articulate is related to mass core participation. The second problem that we'll take a look at are related to academic outcomes. And the third is delivering on the promises of the quality guarantees that the superintendent has very clearly articulated to our community. I'll tackle problem one and then turn it over to my colleague Farah Azaraj, who will discuss problems two and three. As it relates to mass core participation, next slide, please. Next slide. We think it's important that we take a look at where we've been and where we need to go around our students having the opportunity to meet the graduation requirements for mass core that has been boldly adopted by policy by the Boston School Committee. I'll just orient you first to this table and then walk you through our takeaways as a team. The first section of the table looks at school year twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. The second section of the table looks at school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And the third section of the table looks at school years twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. You also see student groups listed on the left-hand side of the slide. And for each year, it tells you the number of students who graduated, the number of those students who completed mass core, and the percentage of those students who completed mass core for for each of those three school years. Well, the good news is that for every group of students, the the percentage and number of students who completed mass core requirements increased from school year eighteen nineteen to nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. We start, we see two really main points from this table. One, far too few of our students have the opportunities that they deserve to meet the mass core requirements. And persistent gaps exist between groups of students. I appreciated the questions and dialogue from our last school committee meeting, where we talked about the work that we've done to identify the root causes at all of our schools relative to delivering on the promise of mass core and the strategic planning that we've done with each head of school in each high school community to ensure that we remove barriers for the incoming ninth grade class so that we are in compliance with the bold policy that the school committee adopted. I'll turn it over to my colleague Farah Azaraj, who will tackle problems two and three.
Thank you, Drew, Dr. Eggleston, for starting us off to frame our problems. I want to first start by just congratulating Rafaela, Señora Rafaela Polanco Garcia and Roxy Harvey as a former English Learner Task Force member, as well as an interim Assistant Superintendent for English Learners. I think the importance of having parent voice is essential to all that we do, and especially those with the experience. And I know that both of you bring such wealth and knowledge and experience that you have, as well as hopefully more parent engagement in our English Learner Task Force. So thank you for taking that charge on and joining the task force, and we look forward to working with you. Academic outcomes will lead into the next slide. Some of this information is not new for our school committee members, aside of our new members, so we'll want to make sure that we have the information to sort of give the landscape of our achievement outcomes. And data is really just as useful as a comprehensive view that sort of fits into a story and the narrative of our students, as well as the conditions of our schooling and our path forward, ensuring that the trajectory of our students is in service of their academic achievement. That is the work that we must do and that we continue to do in the teaching and learning of our Boston Public School students. One of our data indicators and metrics certainly is in regard to COVID and the experience that our students have faced with attendance and chronic absenteeism indicates that we have seen a percentage, a significant, at least percentage of a decline. Now, COVID in two thousand nineteen to two twenty twenty, this is where you see that darker blue indicator for that year. That was our first year for for COVID, as we all know, our schools shut down in March of twenty twenty. Moving to the lighter blue data sets, I'm sorry, not the slide, the data sets that you see here in the lighter blue, that is the year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Obviously, last year, as school communities grappled with ensuring that students are returning to school, there were many, many families and students who were impacted by COVID directly. And so we see this continue this year in addition to students moving to in-person versus remote learning. We are working towards ensuring that all of our schools are utilizing the data dashboard, the MTSS data dashboard, which really breaks down the data sets monthly for schools to identify which students are for schools to identify which students are tier two or tier three in chronic absenteeism as well as the success plans for attendance. That work from youth opportunities office as well as family liaisons to the Office of English Learner Family Specialists is an effort from the district to the school level to ensure that we are to ensure that we are doing our due diligence, engaging students, identifying the root causes of significant attendance and patterns of attendance for students as well as COVID impact, especially as the Omicron surge has impacted student attendance. So we will be updating you more on our attendance and the significance of attendance with regard to achievement, with regard to credit recovery and courses and ensuring that all students have access and opportunity to reengage and to make up work as well as be afforded opportunities and out of school time and summer programming to meet their needs. We're going to move into the next slide. And again, this is a previous slide that you have seen on achievement outcomes. The significance here is that in 2019, all students took the MCAS in person and also participated in both sessions for ELA. In 2019, comparison to 2021, in 2021 is the orange scale. And the bar that you see at 500 is the meeting or exceeding expectations for MCAS. In 2021, the difference in our MCAS and just I skipped over 2020, but just in case anyone wanted context for that year, the MCAS where we, the state allowed for provisions and accommodations so that students were not held to MCAS. However, 2021, the provisions and accommodations meant that students were afforded opportunities to participate remotely. In addition, the assessment changed from two parts and two sections, excuse me, to one. So as a former school leader last year, I have to be honest in terms of the validity as well as the differences in terms of tests and environment for students remotely. So there is a lot that we can unpack in terms of the variety, the variability as well as validity of the assessment as a comparative analysis. But one thing is true that we'll also see on the next slide for math is that there is a significant and stark difference in subgroups and performance. So if we look across subgroups in particular, I'm sorry, I'm just, we're not there yet. I'm just going to have us go right back. Thank you. That we'll see a similar profile for ELA and math. In particular, our English learners with disabilities are lower achieving and other subgroups in comparison to Asian and white students. Again, if we're looking across subgroups, you see that the patterns for disproportionality and underachievement are comparative in both and that we do have a significant amount of work to do and boosting up our math scores and achievement as our math scores have actually dipped significantly to the degree that we've seen here in comparison to ELA. We're going to move into the next slide and I just want to sort of orient to that the intent and the purpose for sharing this data is to ensure that we are really centering the data outcomes towards our financial sustainability plans and investments that will ensure we're meeting our quality guarantees. And so the data for our math growth reading achievement is a similar profile. It's a very different assessment, which is why you see a different breakdown here. It is a breakdown of quintiles by 20%. So what you see here is that students from percentile average to the percentile in that green bucket is an indicator for prediction on how students will do on NCAS. So we, this is a comparative assessment across the country. There is a timeline and a window on which this assessment is taken. In addition to that, it is a growth assessment. And so our comparative analysis for student growth means that participation from fall, winter, and spring is really essential to be able to see how students are growing and reading in addition to math in comparison to themselves and the cohort of students that they are measured against. But again, this is alarming percentages of student performance. And in particular, when we break it down by student subgroups, we see that the stark disproportionality for particular subgroups is evident. We'll move into the next slide, which is a similar slide, but it is on math achievement. And again, this speaks to what the math data demonstrated earlier on NCAS, which where we see an increase in the red category, which is a percent low as well as the percent low average, which means that conversely, we see a decrease in students that are meeting exceeding, in this case, that percent that are high average and percent high. So the story unfortunately that we are sharing and that we have shared is indicative of the growth assessments as well as assessments that are towards our accountability systems for state assessments. And we know that there is potential and amazing work that happens in our classrooms and our schools amongst our students and teachers. I think I attend these meetings more so to see the PHI students speak about how amazing their school is, for example. So there are some quality indicators for schools and performance of students that we don't always capture and nor that speak to the entire data sets for particularly ELA and math achievement scores. However, this is why we need to make our efforts and focus our investments towards increasing our academic achievements, which will lead us into the next slide. And this is where we move towards what we have heard from students and families on the needs for not just re-envisioning the quality guarantees for students who are currently here, but let's just, you know, take that Maya Rubin, Miriam, congratulations. But Maya Rubin, who is our graduate at 2020, 2040, which I think I'll be just at the cusp of retirement. But at 2040, we are creating a pathway for our future and students' future in the system. If we can just please go to the next slide and just sort of walk through what we've heard from our educators, our community schools around these areas. In academics, the needs to have, the need to have high quality, ethnically and culturally responsive curriculum instruction and career pathways. This obviously encompasses many of the work that we've currently started to engage in with ethnic studies, the increase of dual language pathways or heritage language programming, as well as an increase of libraries and many more areas that Superintendent Cassilius has brought forth in her tenure. Enrichment is correlated to the success of academics. I have a 10th grade Boston Public School student who is right now at basketball and is engaging in soccer. That is honestly probably the one indicator and motivation for her to do well in academics and to keep up her grades, given other constraints that she's feeling with COVID. So it's really important that we sort of see the whole picture and the student and that profile as well as the needs to match those opportunities. So those expeditionary learning, experiential learning, the community-based approaches that we can integrate for student learning are really important that connect to our facilities, students, and family support. So our hub community schools model, for example, that really encompasses our social workers, the needs across the assets of schools as well as our community. And so integrating that community asset model and ensuring that our facilities are the foundation of our, of our needs and quality guarantees are moving towards creating buildings and access to science, labs, technology, libraries, gymnasiums, and hopefully additional green spaces for students to engage in in experiential learning at their school sites. We're going to move into the next slide and I will work on slowing down. So for every BPS student, for every, every BPS student should have access to and the commitment to have access to in elementary schools, a rigorous academic preparation program and education that ensures that STEM education is a part of that experience, dual world language, which is inclusive of heritage languages, that swimming lessons, outdoor play, play spaces, inclusive classrooms, and again, wraparound services, especially for our youngest learners. For secondary schools and secondary students in particular, we have to shift towards a model that really supports and engages our students at all levels of their needs and in particular accessibility to mass core, other early college and enrollment opportunities in classes and internships, job shadow and apprenticeships and just other opportunities for them to have a clear pathway for both college and career planning. And the additional investments with school counselors, other supports will surely create other pathways or open up other pathways for students to consider. And with all of those, the commitment towards a seal of biliteracy in which students can build their native language skills to a higher enough proficiency to be able to pass the stamp exam and qualify for the seal of biliteracy. That is a huge benefit on their transcript as well as their college application. But more importantly, that it is a value add and it's a part of our system to recognize the importance of our languages in connection to our communities, our identities, our families, elders, and those that, again, that share that language with us. So it is also recognizing and uplifting the native languages of our students and families. And with all of that, the learning that happens with ethnic studies and integrating the variety of ethnicities that our student bodies represent in making sure that we have inclusive classrooms and wraparound services for our secondary students. So the path forward for all of the needs that we have to ensure our college and career pathways are accessible to all students ensures that we are building from the ground up and that foundation starts in the early grades and elementary. But it also ensures that, it also pushes us to ensure that our investments and our financial investments are matching with the needs of what we hear from our students, families and educators, as well as what we, what we know to be true and what we know to be a great need in order to be of service to our students. I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Nate, who will move us into the conversation of our budget and in alignment with our academic priorities and quality guarantees.
Thank you, Farah, and thank you, Drew. You know, I think as everyone tuned in, ready to, to see a lot of numbers and talk about the budget, we wanted to start with the numbers that are really important and anchor ourselves in outcomes and improvement for students. Our goal is to link our challenges and the issues that we're facing with our students directly to our operating and ESSER commitments as we move into fiscal year 23. So I appreciate the team coming and starting by outlining these three core challenges around mass core participation, academic outcomes, and the quality guarantee. To meet these challenges, the superintendent is proposing an FY23 operating budget that increases spending by over 40 million. The operating budget is not the only financial resource we have to meet students' needs. Therefore, throughout tonight's presentation, we'll share both the operating investments and highlight places where federal ESSER funding complements those investments. And there's a lot to celebrate in fiscal year 23. To improve access to mass core, we are investing $6.2 million in new courses, curriculum, training, and academic resources for secondary schools. To ensure all students receive the support they need to access mass core and graduate on time, we're investing in secondary guidance counselors. For all secondary schools, we'll have one guidance counselor for every 150 students. Our largest set of investments appropriately is focused on closing achievement gaps and supporting all learners. It includes major investments in English learner programs and re-imagining special education services. We're also investing in academic counseling pre-K to pre-K to eight. These positions will be focused on coordinating and providing academic supports for students, ensuring that recovery is tailored to individual school needs. They're part of the team that will be taking the data that Farah and Drew presented this evening to you and breaking it down for each student and understanding their individual learning goals. And finally, we're continuing to invest in our quality guarantee. Since the superintendent first arrived.
You're on mute. Sorry.
I'd assume that I was only on mute for the last sentence and not for most of the time that I was talking there. Finally, we're continuing to invest in our quality guarantee. Since the start of her tenure, the superintendent has been focused on improving quality across the board. Equity means all students have consistent and predictable access to the resources that they need at all schools. This year, we're building on those investments, increasing access to libraries, expanding social emotional supports to students, and continuing to focus on our facilities. The superintendent already mentioned this, but it bears repeating. We are incredibly fortunate. I think whenever I turn it on the main channel. That's. Okay. This is the third year of $100 million commitment from the city to continue to invest in the Boston Public Schools. And actually, under Mayor Wu's leadership, we'll be adding $40 million in new spending this year, bringing the total investment over the last three years to $110 million. And this is important to note that this is new spending and new increases in investments in our students. We do not have a collective bargaining agreement in place with the BTU and the other unions, which would normally represent a significant increase in costs for FY23 budget. Those are held in reserve by the city and will be added to our budget when collective bargaining has been settled. So this increase of $40 million is not just the cost of doing business. This is real investment in new services and supports for our schools. The superintendent mentioned in her opening remarks that we've gone through a period of declining enrollment. Combined with the increased investments, what we see is a 31% increase in per pupil spending over the last three years. We are projecting that in FY23, we will spend over $27,000 per pupil of just general fund investments. This does not include our ESSER spending. This does not include our external funds and other grants. This is investment just on our operating budget. This represents a $6,400 per pupil increase since fiscal year 20. This represents significant investment in our students and, and in our communities. The increase in spending at the school level has been driven by two major factors. The first is our soft landings. This is the hold harmless that we've talked about for schools who are experiencing enrollment decline. Over the last two years, we've made significant investment to support schools. This is something we're going to talk a lot about because it's important for us to stabilize school environments in a very unstable time for us as a community and especially for our students. This pandemic has been disruptive enough. We don't need them going through budget cuts or changes in programs at their schools. But this also means that we have significantly funded schools outside of our weighted student funding formula and created soft landings that we need to address in future years. The other major source of school-based funding is in that quality guarantee. And as we started to pile together and we'll go through in detail, as we started to look at the investments that are part of this quality guarantee, it is an impressive investment in consistent services across and provides our students with opportunities that they did not have just three short years ago. I mentioned already that ESSER provides us the opportunity to do even more for recovery and to prepare our students and also cover operation. Um, and also uh cover operational costs and in operating in this environment. Uh, the Essar funding will last through fiscal year twenty four. And represents if smoothed over three years, a hundred and thirty three million dollars in spending per year. Throughout this presentation, I'll highlight places where um Essar funding is complementing our operating budget. Of course, both the investment in soft landings, the. Desire to create this consistent, high-quality foundation, this quality guarantee across all of our schools. And the changing conditions of our district have meant that we need to reevaluate how we fund our schools. This is the, we have, we invested in WS- WSF weighted student funding over ten years ago. And a lot has changed over the last ten years. And so we want to evaluate this in light of our priorities for students and families. In looking at and having the difficult conversations around what is our definition of equity and how does that play out in our funding formula? We have a tremendous opportunity here over the next twelve to eighteen months to lead a community conversation. About how we fund our schools. And so we'll be looking for a lot of participation from the school committee, of course. But also members of our community who will both need to be active consultants and participants. In the engagement for how we fund our schools. It's an opportunity for us to shape the trajectory of our district over the next ten years. We'll also highlight at different points, other major projects that are addressing this quality guarantee. The two that are complimentary of this weighted student funding and Imagine School Funding project. Um, are out of the operations department of facilities condition assessment. To have a consistent definition of the quality of our school buildings, the physical infrastructure of our buildings. So that we understand where we have the greatest need to invest in infrastructure. And then we're also partnering with the public facilities department, the city's agency responsible for all new building construction. And all major construction projects. We're partnering with them to define what our building program will be for K to six and seven to twelve schools. This means that we're going to have a conversation with the community around what do we want our buildings to have? Science labs and STEM facilities, cafeterias and libraries, gymnasiums and auditoriums. What are the different pieces and parts of a school? Um, that we need to have. Then we're going to use that definition to assess all our current buildings. So we'll know their condition. And then we'll know how well they meet our educational vision. These three projects will combine to give us important information to scope out our our strategy for the next five to ten years. Focusing back on the fiscal year twenty three budget. This is built around the idea of returning strong, recovering well, and reimagining education in our ever-changing world. Our operating dollars are invested in three key, in those three key areas. Six million dollars of our investments on operating will um go towards returning strong. Thirty five million dollars of our investments are to support student recovery. And ten million dollars of investments are focused on reimagining to come back as the district we need for all of our students. The first focus of our budget and in our work is to return strong by continuing to improve operations. And ensure all students and staff have have access to safe and healthy buildings. Each segment, return, recover and reimagine, will open with an overview of the investments in each side, um, in each section. As I mentioned, we'll highlight both the operating budget, that funding supplied through um the city of Boston. Those investments that are made on operating. And then the complementary Essar investments that are in fiscal year twenty three. This is the federal funding provided as COVID relief. I'll note that in a one point three billion dollar budget, there's a lot of our existing budget that will go to support. Our um, our students in these key areas. The first line, for example, there's one point three million dollar investment in transportation performance. This is a small portion of our overall operating budget. Later in separate hearings, we'll dive deeper into school budgets, we'll dive deeper into the central budgets. That allow us to paint the fuller picture of how our total dollars will be used. But for tonight's presentation, the focus is on how we're making new investments and changing our budgets to meet changing student needs. The second major portion of this is an investment in high-quality facilities, four point eight million dollars focused on that. We think about our facilities work as really three major phases. The first is what we're doing now immediately. We want to continue on current year investments in indoor air quality sensors. Um, expansions of custodians, which was part of the FY twenty two budget that will continue in FY twenty three. And we're also planning investments that make an immediate impact, increasing staffing and training for custodians. And we're also increasing capacity and maintenance and repairs. Those are the short-term repairs that are needed to to fix broken windows or broken tiles, things that happen in the operation of the building. We're also planning investments that will impact students in the next twelve to eighteen months. The biggest part of that is the second part of the rollout of HVAC and air quality improvements in air conditioning to help control climate in our buildings. And then finally, we're making investments in our capital planning capacity as a district. Thinking about our planning and engineering department, those individuals who have to manage major projects. As we lay out an ambitious capital plan and as the superintendent makes moves to improve our overall facilities. We need the central office capacity to deliver on that in a way that eases the burden on individual school communities. And increases the likelihood of successful implementation of those projects. The second focus in our budget and in our work is to recover well. To ensure that school communities have what they need to not only repair the damage done by COVID nineteen. But also to create the conditions in which students and families can thrive. Here you see multiple investments in academic counseling. The superintendent has highlighted and been talking a lot about the need to expand access to libraries and librarians. And expanding social emotional supports. I'll also note significant investments directly in schools. Next year, schools will receive an additional allocation of Essar dollars directly for their planning and recovery um supports to students. And then support for students with, excuse me, support for schools with declining enrollment. This is the first investment that I want to highlight and talk about again. As we did last year. We are investing in additional financial support outside of weighted student funding. We recognize that the pandemic has been disruptive and destabilizing for our students. Therefore. We're continuing to ensure that major changes to school programs and offerings are not an additional disruption to student education. Schools were asked to reduce classrooms and adjust positions where it was determined that we didn't need to keep capacity open. We need to start the difficult work of adjusting capacity. They were asked to pay for, in some cases, if they were autonomous schools. Asked to uh cover the cost of actual salary cost increases. Um, and they were, if they wanted to make trade-offs within their own budget to shift their resources, they were asked to pay for that within their existing budgets. But as we did last year, we did not ask schools to cut positions or programs outside of direct instructional positions. Unless it was related to the actual salary increases that I mentioned before. The result is significant increases in the growth of soft landings for the Boston Public Schools. Last year, as the superintendent has already mentioned, we invested eighteen point five million dollars more roughly. Um, from the FY twenty one, seven point three million to the FY twenty two, twenty seven point four million. This year, we've increased it another twenty six million to a total soft landings of fifty four million um overall. We're extremely excited to be launching the first year of a multi-year rollout of expanded access to libraries. This includes library staff. Um, opening day collections refers to the books and startup cost of opening a new library. Making sure that our books are 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 of libraries are filled with culturally affirming and brand-new texts. And then recognizing that we need to increase our ongoing operating investment in book in collections. To upkeep at individual schools and all schools what their library collections are. And then finally, there's a portion of this that includes furniture and technology stations in each li- a library to be able to support um student use. Next week, February seventh through eleventh will mark National School Counseling Week. So this makes this the perfect time to both recognize the hard work that our counselors are doing throughout this time. And to and to recognize the contributions they make to our schools across the district. But it's also an exciting and perfect time for us to announce an expansion of the team of counselors we have across all of our schools. In FY twenty, we expanded nursing services. Over FY twenty one and FY twenty two, we made significant expansions um to social workers and family liaisons. This year, we continue to invest in a broader hub schools model by investing two point eight million to add twenty six more FTE and school psychologists. The average staffing for school psychologists in Massachusetts is one psychologist for every seven hundred and thirty four students. This investment enables BPS to have a ratio of one psychologist for every five hundred students. Meeting the national recommendation for school psychologists. We'll also significantly expand access to guidance counseling, both at the elementary and secondary levels. Which is a critical role for supporting the academic recovery of our students. The third focus in our budget and in our work is to reimagine education in an ever-changing world. Here you'll see investments in Essar to change the way that we operate and to change the way we meet the students' academic needs. Um, Farah has already talked about and highlighted places where bilingual supports and increased native language programming is going to impact our students. She spoke so well about it, I won't mess it up by trying to imitate her poorly. So. We'll also highlight investments in equitable literacy for all students. Reimagining programming for students with disabilities, including breaking down barriers to inclusion. And um, providing basic access with an expansion of translations and interpretations. This is another place that I want to highlight. This is a, this is an expansion of a significant investment that we've made over the last few years. Two point six million dollars is one portion of the multimillion dollar investment we make in translations and interpretation services. We talked about in the opening, the need for us to think about this quality guarantee across four key domains. What are we doing in academics to provide high-quality ethnically and culturally responsive curriculum, instruction and career pathways? We need to focus on providing rigorous opportunities and course offerings across all schools. We need to think about enrichment, sports and arts, those things that stimulate student mind and help support their learning across disciplines. We need to think about our facilities and make sure that they are high-quality and beautiful, no matter what school you're enrolled in. And then finally, we need to continue to invest in student and family support. When we looked back since FY twenty, the expansion of our equitable access to opportunities through this qual- quality guarantee. It represents an impressive list of investments. Social workers, sixteen million dollars in social work expansion, adding hundreds of resources, hundreds of FTEs to the district. Family liaisons, ensuring close connections between students, families and the schools. Instructional facilitators to implement and drive instructional quality. And then, of course, one thing that we expanded in year one was access to science, technology and art classes. Um, the nurses that we already mentioned. And this year in the FY twenty three budget, we're expanding opportunities in places that we've already highlighted, but I'm going to mention it again. Three point nine million in high school guidance counselors to ensure better coaching and supports for students. Three point seven million in librarians. This is representing the staffing in- investments. School psychologists, K to nine academic, K through eight, excuse me, academic counseling. Um, this is ten million dollars represented on Essar and then of an expansion of athletics, one point five million. When we looked at our assessment of who has access to Mass Core, we found that only two schools had greater than seventy five percent completing Mass Core graduation. This is why at three point eight million, we're investing in the ninth grade class to make sure. That they have access to Mass Core curriculum. This involves an assessment of our schedules at the high school level and has allowed us to develop an academic collaborative process. One of the, and this might be a little bit of an inside baseball term, but. In our budget process, we have what's called a budget collaborative. This is the time when school leaders meet with a team of central office uh folks represented by the Office of. Um, English Learners, Special Education, Human Capital and the Budget Team. To meet and talk about their budget and making sure that their budget meets our compliance requirements, but also meets the needs of their students. This year, at the high school level, we're complementing that with academic collaborative conversations. To review schedules and make sure that schools have the resources they need and the schedules they need to deliver on the Mass Core. And graduation requirements that we want to set as a standard across all of our schools. Want to talk a little bit more about the, just the budget numbers themselves. And of course, the most important number for our planning as we start is forty nine thousand two hundred and fifty one. That is our projected number of students. Our budget process begins both practically and theoretically by understanding the students we're going to serve. We presented an overview enrollment projections in December and we've included in the appendix. Those numbers for people to be able to review if they want. The projected number of students and how they impact our budget. Our full budget is available online in Excel and PDF. You can view that budget in three major categories. How we do account, how we spend by account, which is the type of spending it is, whether it's a contract. Whether it's teaching staff or benefits, transportation or supplies. You can look at it by department, which tells you who's responsible for the spending and manages the spending. That includes central office departments and individual school budgets. And you can view it by program area, which tells you the type of spending and program it's meant to support. This will help shed light in our spending overall in English learners and inclusion programs. How much we spend on athletics and how much we spend on early childhood. We break that up by both external funds, um, operating funds, our general funds, and then all funds. It's a lot of information. So if you want one slide that really breaks down our budget in the key categories, this is it. We've broken our budget into four main categories. The first is direct school expenses. Those items budgeted directly in schools. And this, of course, represents the largest portion of our budget, nearly two-thirds of our budget. Second category is what we refer to as school services budgeted centrally. These are items that are managed by a central department, but are actually in our schools. Examples of this include custodians. Custodians are all budgeted and managed by our facilities department. But the vast majority of our custodians you'll find working in and cleaning and doing a fabulous job in all of our schools. Other examples include special education itinerant service providers, all budgeted centrally, but allocated directly out to schools. The third category is central administration. This is the superintendent, your chief financial officer and the central academics team. Those offering operational support to our schools. And finally, the fourth category of spending is non-BPS student services. Those services like transportation to charter schools that we provide to Boston residents who are in non-BPS schools. One note I just want to make is every year we hold a number of reserves. For spending that we plan to allocate out to schools. This year, we have two reserves as we finalize two major investments. The school um psychologist investment and our, we finalize our library investment. Those um investments, six point five million, it are tagged currently in that central budget. So the large increase you see here in central administration. Is actually an increase in um, in school reserves and will, by the time we come back with an updated budget at the end of March. Will uh be allocated out to schools. The final segment of our presentation tonight is our equity analysis. We continue to replicate the methodology used in the last few years to ensure the most resources are directed. To the students with the highest needs or who have been historically marginalized. We will continue to revisit this analysis and present, present new analyses in each of the upcoming budget hearings. We want to continue to have important conversations about equity at each of our hearings. What we try and do as a district is guarantee every student access to quality schools and academic and enrichment experience. In the past, our guarantee of a foundational funding has been very limited, and I highlighted already throughout this presentation, the significant improvements we've made to raise the bar and fulfill our quality guarantee. As you may remember, over the last few years, we've made significant progress in understanding our spending. Two years ago, we took the step to attach each dollar of spending to specific students. For example, we divided our summer school budget based on the students who attended that summer school program. As part of this analysis, we found that while some parts of our budget are relatively evenly spread across all student groups, such as central office spending, other parts are intentionally allocated differentially to different students. For example, our weighted student funding formula intentionally invests more in higher-needs students through direct certification, the opportunity index, and other measures. Our spending on transportation, special education, and English learners, the central and school level, also differentially reflect investments in higher-needs communities. When we add up our budget, looking at the FY twenty two budget as a baseline, what we find is that we make larger investments in our Black and Latinx students relative to our white and Asian students. While we are proud that our budget shows progress in this differentiation and is a progressive budget, which is not the case in many other districts, we believe that greater differentiation is needed to close opportunity gaps for our highest needs and historically marginalized learners. It's in the closing of those gaps, in the equity of outcomes, that we really see that our funding is truly equitable. For each new investment, what we do is attach that spending to individual students and divide the total cost by the students so that we can look by subgroup at how much of that investment, how much per pupil goes for this investment. For example, we looked at schools for support for declining enrollment and found that on average, it's nine hundred and seventy-three dollars per student to support schools. But because Black and Latinx students are more likely to attend schools with declining enrollment for a variety of reasons, we find that the support, the investment to support schools with declining enrollment invests more in Black and Latinx students. This investment will attract almost two hundred dollars more per pupil to Black and Latinx students than to Asian and white students. Similarly, it will direct almost two hundred dollars more per pupil to low-income students than to non-low-income students. An example of an investment that provides more parity, which is ensuring that every student has access to the same level of services support, is our new investment in school guidance counselors for ninth grade. Each year, when we conduct this analysis, we're challenged to understand why and how these investments affect different groups. I'll be honest, at first, I was surprised that this investment was so low on a per-pupil basis for English learners. After more consideration and working with the team, I realized that because this investment is only in the ninth grade, it does not impact the majority of our English learners who are disproportionately enrolled in our elementary grades. Those are highlights of two of our investments. As I mentioned, I will continue to come back to you as a committee and to the broader community with additional equity analysis throughout the budget process. We provide a lot of information online. Our goal in the finance department is to be watchdogs for equity, to be transparent, and to partner with our community. As part of the transparency piece, we publish a lot of information online. Tonight's budget presentation, which is also translated into multiple languages, the FY twenty three weighted student funding allocations by school, and for every single school, you can look up an allocation one pager, which shows you exactly how we build the allocation for each school. All of this can be found at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. As part of our commitment for greater transparency, we are excited to be partnering with Alaview, an education finance technology company, to upgrade our overall technical process for allocating funds, which will be about internal controls and being able to track our budget allocations. We're also going to be piloting new methods of budget planning to work with schools and provide district offices and schools, better tools for aligning to their strategic plan and understanding the equity of their own investments. And then finally, we're hoping to create and update more financial reports for outside stakeholders to be able to track our spending and to dive in and explore budgets even more. And finally, I'll close by just noting, this is the first of many budget hearings. This is a long public process for our budget, and I'm excited to be launching it tonight with you on the committee. We have two hearings, one in next week, which will be hearing on school budgets, where we'll discuss specific school issues. In March, we have a hearing on the central office budget, where we'll, where we will also be focusing on how the central office is organized to support English learners and special education students. And then finally, we'll be back on March sixteenth to be able to present any updates to our budget and to be able to answer school, school committee-directed questions. And then, of course, we'll be asking you to vote on this budget at the end of March. With that, I will end the presentation and turn it back over to the chairperson for your questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cooter, and thank you to your team that's been working tirelessly behind the scenes for months to bring us this budget recommendation. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Again, I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed-upon norm that we each have five minutes. That's one to two questions. I'd like to remind BPS staff to also be brief with your responses. If you have another, if you have additional questions, I'll come back and do a second round. So at this point, please raise your hands for questions. I see several hands. All right, Dr. Alkins, begin with you.
Yes, I'll keep it brief with one question, though I have several. The ESER funds that come off the books in the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four, does your office have a sense of the long-term strategy about how to continue to support a lot of the programming that potentially might go away after the ESER funds stop? And is that directly tied to, do you have projections as to if enrollment might dip back up? Or do you have the sense that enrollment will continue to decline?
Thank you for that question. I think you're hitting on a number of really key issues. Part of the ESER strategy, I think, is twofold. One, it's really focused on recovery efforts and having interventions that are intended to help the students who are currently affected by COVID and catch them up. So we're, as we invest in different programs and strategies, the goal is that they will go away because they are not needed going forward, as opposed to ongoing continued investments. The superintendent has often talked about pairing our ESER investments with our operating investments because we need to keep the costs that are ongoing on our operating budget. And so you'll see in the case of the libraries, where ESER is helping to support the fund and acquisition of materials, often used for training, but it's not going to the staff that will be allocated out to individual school communities. I will say that part of the investment in a quality guarantee is the superintendent's belief in what the term I think she's been using is a pro-enrollment strategy. We recognize that people have been leaving the district because they have not been able to get this guaranteed high quality at all of the schools. And as we provide that service, we're going to be sort of using this as a proving ground to be able to recapture some of our enrollment. The current enrollment trends, I will say, the last thing I'll say, and I was, I'm supposed to keep my answers brief, and I'm not doing a good job. The, we see declining enrollment. The concern is the declining enrollment in K one, K two, and first grade. And traditionally, what that means for us, because the size of the incoming cohorts really dictates for us the size of our district for the next few years, that we will go through multiple years of enrollment decline. That's why it's so important for us to continue to invest in high quality and to be competitive. Because in Boston, there's a lot of different choices that that families have, and we want to make sure Boston is the first choice.
Thank you. Mr. Carter Hernandez.
I have a lot of questions, but thank you again for the presentation tonight and the incredible work behind this very complex problem, which sometimes sounds like good news to spend, and obviously it creates tons of challenges as well. So I just want to clarify Dr. Alkins' point, too. That means the ESER funds are not being spent on headcount.
There are some cases in which ESER funding is going towards individual positions, particularly positions that are geared towards student recovery. The other piece of it is, as we start to think about places where we will be looking for another additional commitment from the city, we're starting to start those investments now to make sure that students have access to them now as we start to think through. The other piece that I didn't mention from Mr. Alkins' question that I think is worth, we have to have other conversations about efficiencies, and we're committed to using our ESER funding to think differently about how we serve our students and can think about that more efficiently. Some of that will come from difficult conversations around the number of schools and the size of schools that we operate. Some of it will come from changing the way we serve our students in expensive settings that are exclusionary, providing innovative ways to both be inclusive and meet the needs of our students. So we do have a commitment as an organization to continue to invest in efficiencies, and that's part of the superintendent's investment in some of our central capacity, is to really to bring in the expertise to think differently about our operations and change things as well.
I think it would be helpful just for our next go at this, if that, like, really sort of, just granular, the number of headcount that we anticipate ESER funds being, just so we're thinking sort of long-term, what's staying even after the funds leave, knowing that, like, you'd balance the books in a different way. I just think that level of clarity is good. Another question, in the presentation, I'm, you know, we're obviously all thinking about enrollment decline. Your naming that we anticipate greater enrollment decline, particularly given enrollment in the earlier grades. But if I'm seeing this correctly, the projection around holding schools harmless for twenty twenty-three is based on last year's enrollment decline? Or is it based on a new projection for what that decline is going to be in the future?
And we have, we use current year enrollment to project future year enrollment. And so the projected number of students that we have here considers the students that we have lost in the current year. The one thing I'll just note, and this is something we've talked about in more detail in the past, and we can go into it at the schools' hearing if it's helpful, but we often report publicly our October enrollment, which this year was around forty nine thousand two hundred students. That's an important number for us to plan for and know about. And it represents about what our enrollment is throughout the year. But when we project for weighted student funding or we project for budget purposes, we are both projecting our October enrollment and then what we call the high watermark throughout the year. So our projection of an, our, if you compared our enrollment projection number to our October enrollment, we're almost always higher in our budget number. That's because we have specific student groups that grow throughout the year that we need to have capacity for, even though they're not going to be in October. So roughly speaking, general education declines throughout the year, special education increases throughout the year. So we project the highest number of students in both categories.
Makes sense, Nate. I'm just curious, just thinking about this, if we know that there's year-over-year decline, why are we not planning for it in this budget exercise? Like, if we know it's true, like, there's no, we, that sort of, there will be a miracle for us to not see enrollment decline next year. Maybe I'm wrong. Tell me I'm wrong. So then why wouldn't we try to plan for what that is, so we're thinking sharper around the other spending?
We are, we are planning for enrollment declines, and in terms of capacity, we are adjusting school-based capacity where appropriate. So we are looking at the number of paraprofessionals, we're looking at the number of teachers that we have, looking at the number of third-grade classrooms across the district. And where appropriate, where we can, we take that capacity offline. One of the challenges that we have with so many small schools, either single-strand or two-strand schools, or two-s grand schools with multiple programs, is that the ability to consolidate classes at a grade level and save on staffing is just not available to us. And so in the past, we've gone through some of our more difficult budgets, and Mr. O'Neill and Ms. Robinson, you remember some of these budgets. In weighted student funding, we would have passed that burden on to schools to make those tough trade-offs. What we've been doing as a district is to say, we have some difficult conversations we need to have as a district. In the meantime, we're not going to make our current students pay for that. So the hold harmless is to go for non-classroom supports, social workers, existing librarians, to be able to support those students through that transition.
And I, I hear that, and I think, like, this is not a time where we want to disrupt that, that safety net for schools and for families and for kids. But I'm just thinking around accuracy, around the projection. I think we could probably get tighter because we have some information that would tell us what we wouldn't be trying to recruit based on the projection.
I think our enrollment projections are fairly accurate. I mean, we use a significant amount of data, and we are projecting an enrollment decline year over year. So we are projecting and planning on it. The other thing I'll just note about Boston that you met, people may not be familiar with, is we have hard class size maxes in our contract that is different from other major districts and different from suburbs. So we can't use class size averages, we can't merge classrooms. If you have twenty-eight kids in the third grade, you need two classrooms because the class size max is twenty-five. That means as a district, our ability to adjust for enrollment capacity is much more rigid than, than a lot of other districts have the option of doing. I'm not saying that rigidity is a bad thing, it's just a reality of how it affects our overall budgeting. But I think you'll find that, that typically, I mean, we did have a larger-than-anticipated decline in enrollment due to the pandemic. That was unpredictable. Those are the kind of shocks to the system that we couldn't predict. But over time, I think you'll find that by grade and by program, our enrollment projections are pretty accurate.
Good. All right. I won't belabor this one, but it's, I still, the question still remains for me around then the, the number we're projecting around what we will hold schools harmless for. That, like, I, I trust the math around the enrollment projections and all the reasons that there's complexity there. But it, I just don't see the, the connection between last year's data around our whole harmless number and this year's projections around the enrollment. And I will, my time's up.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter Hernandez. Others with questions? Ms. Lapera.
Thank you so much, team, for working on this and putting this together, understand the complexity just behind all of the, the different pieces. I'm thinking about, and this also comes from personal lived experience of having a little one who is currently in UPK, but not necessarily a part of BPS. But what are, where in the budget are we thinking about the strategies to really capture and increase enrollment at the onset, right? So we know that, as you mentioned, Chief Cooter, that our enrollment is really dependent on students that we capture, whether it's in K one, K two, right further down the line for the years. And so what is, where in our budget is the strategy in capturing as many students at the beginning, such as my little one?
So our welcome services department is part of the overall effort to recruit students. I think this is a place where we might want to come back and do a deeper dive or provide you with more information. Because I don't want to talk too much about the, the details of something I don't know. But the, that includes countdown to kindergarten, as you may be familiar by seeing the yellow T-shirts throughout the city, which we try and make sure people are aware of options. And then I think we need to do a, a good job of, of letting people know about this quality guarantee, letting people know about the high-quality opportunities that are at our schools. Because the perception of BPS and the perception of, I think particularly during budget season, they're so used to hearing in the news about budget cuts or resources that schools are, that schools are losing. alert, that schools are losing, they're not hearing about the many new expansions and supports of services. You know, if we've been doing some family meetings for the new seven 12s to be able to explain to people what investments we're making in the high schools, these are great opportunities for us to sell BPS and to get people on board with the investments that we're making.
But I think to that point, like what investments are we putting into the budget to make that case, right? Or where are we investing in larger or greater community engagement? And especially at like specific entry points for capturing students? I understand the, 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 the investments that you all are sharing in terms of increasing the quality and making it more equitable across the district. But are we, is there an, an investment in the strategy to make that public and to really engage with the community to have folks want to be a part of BPS?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bloom, I'll have you answer in just a moment with your ideas. I do want to just share that you are bringing up a really key point about our storytelling and what we are sharing, our good news about our schools and getting students in the door. I was talking with Mr. Cardet Hernandez about this just today, about schools being beautiful and just getting parents to come through the front door so that they can experience the, the wonderful communities that we have within, within our school, even though our buildings need a lot of work. So you see the investments in the buildings to get people through the front doors. I think you are going to see more marketing materials. We have our videographer now that's in our communications office who is doing videos of our schools. But I think we have to do a lot more to your point of engaging families and inviting them in. It has been hard, obviously during the pandemic when we can't have visitors to even do our showcases that we offer. They've been on Zoom. And so we have had in our family, community advancement office showcases every year. And we've had to cancel those and just have them via Zoom and do our school previews on Zoom. But the strategy needs to be funded and it needs to be more clearly articulated. And so I will take that back to the team and that is a really good point. I don't know if you had anything else, David, where there's specifically in there?
All I was going to add was, you may not see it in this budget proposal, but in the superintendent's first budget proposals, the school committee, there was an investment in communications and marketing for BPS and superintendent. I was going to say something that you already said, which is the pandemic disrupted some of those plans, specific plans. And so we're having to do them in slightly different ways, but that money is still in the budget. It continues on and you're seeing some of the work in the videos and other things.
Thank you for that. And the last piece that I will say about that is yes, on the marketing and making sure we're telling our story, but also the process is pretty convoluted and not always connected, even with some of our community partners. And so just, it almost takes a thesis to be able to enroll into BPS and it should not be that difficult.
Yes.
And I know you know that, but I, I need to take the opportunity to continue to amplify that because if it's hard for me, I can't even imagine how other folks navigate it.
So now you're talking about a whole nother matter, which is the assignment system and the way that we collect our applications and the way we do choice, that, that process needs an overhaul. I've heard a earful from families about how confusing and how difficult and disappointing it is when they don't get their choices. And so this is something that needs to be taken up. You know, just quite honestly, we haven't had the time and capacity to, to take this on right now, but it's really important to do that because it does make a difference for a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
I, I want to make sure everyone else gets a chance, is it okay?
Yeah, we'll come back, we'll come back.
I'm curious, I will just say this because Lorena knows because I've had to call her. I am in the process of enrolling my child in BPS and
Yay!
But it has been a real challenge. And I think I would love to see real investment, not just in the sort of the pamphlets and the videos, but that system is tough. And I have a master's degree and I have like engaged in it and then stopped. It has taken a long time. And so you can imagine just like going through that process, we have, we have agency and lots of support in our home. If you are going through that process and you're just, you've got minutes and not hours the way that I did, it's, it's tough. So it would be incredible to see us investing. And you know, you and I spoke about making beautiful spaces for that welcome families, but given the 21st century that we're in, like that is our first entry point and that is not a beautiful system. It is, it, it feels complex and antiquated. You, I know we're on the same page, but I just feel like it's important to say, and it would be great to see investment there.
One other thing that we do do is online appointments as well, so that people, we can walk people through it and help them with it. So we do also do that support system. We also have family liaisons now in every single school, which we didn't have before, and they can help be also navigators for our parents, but still the system should be easier. And so bring that back to the team. It would be great if you could give a firsthand kind of exit interview to, to them about your experience and walk them through the difficult parts that you experienced.
Easy, we'll set it up offline. My next question is just about early childhood and the expansion. You know, I know we're seeing a decrease in enrollment K1, two, as we heard earlier. I didn't understand where the early childhood expansion pre-K existed in this budget, if you can help clarify that for us.
We have been in a multi-year effort to expand universal pre-K through partnership organizations. There's a part of the overall budget that was set up as a trust from the city. And over time, as we've gotten those UPK seats expanded, that those ongoing operating costs are then transferred over to us. There is no investment in the current budget for K1 expansion. That part of the K1 expansion that superintendent's been talking about with K to eight reconfiguration is a multi-year plan, though, as I mentioned earlier, we'll continue to watch registrations and if possible, we'll expand K1 where we need to. David, if there's something you wanted to add on?
I was just going to say, in the 48-page tables document you have with our budget in it, the place you would see it is on the, in the departments section. It's under the early learning services department, under the deputy superintendent of academics. That's where it sort of shows up and you, you'll see there's an increase in that budget for the increased costs moving off of UPK, off of the UPK grant and onto our general funds.
Just to also suggest that, you know, one area, you know, we've done a lot in this budget around, and in previous budgets around social emotional wellness, family supports, wraparound supports, and now the mass core, the academics, increasing the arts, PE, et cetera, and the quality and rigor. The next budget, should we get a good budget from the city in the next several years, really should shift to the early, early childhood grades and the quality at the early childhood grades and acts, open up access and quality, and then also focus on enrollment and before and after school care.
Yeah.
Those are the things that still I've heard from the public and from our families are the things that they want.
Yeah. And just you get families in earlier, you know, and obviously changes economic opportunities for so many families who can get back to work. My last, how much of my time? Another question really quick is, I'm, I saw you note the, you know, that 17.8% change in central budget is up, it's like alarming in many ways. And I understood what you were saying is it's right now, it's like a sort of hold for another funding item. I'm curious then, sort of that removed, what is the actual increase we're seeing in central spending?
I, I should be filling time as David pulls up the actual numbers. I think it's 11 million, yeah, go ahead.
I, I've got it. So it's about $5 million. The biggest single item in that is in our facilities department for staff to be managing the work of facilities, repairs and upgrades. That's the, about 25% of the increase. And then the rest of it's sort of in lots of different individual smaller items, reflecting sort of management of the new investment issues. So for example, a new supervisor for school psychologists as we roll out that investment.
I think for this conversation, obviously there's always, this is a national conversation around how we're thinking about spending at the top and we need people leading and moving the systems. I'm all into that. But I think for our next conversation would be really helpful for us to have more clarity around that. And I think to really share the story of what leadership we're investing in to help realize some of the bigger change.
Can, can I just highlight on that, the, the timing of when we'll come back with different, because I think you're, you're right to ask for more information. Our central budget hearing will be March 1st, where we'll provide more detail about central supports and how we're organizing to support schools. We're also planning to provide Ava Mitchell, Chief Ava Mitchell and her team will be providing an SIR update later this month. That'll provide a deep dive on this. I just, I don't want you to think when we come back of the schools hearing next month that we're ignoring your requests for these deeper dives. We're just going to, they're, they're going to be sequenced a little bit differently throughout the process.
Copy. And I am out of time.
Thank you. Ms. Luangco Garcia.
Gracias, Madanchea. Quiero felicitar al equipo de la, de la superintendente porque tuve la oportunidad de hablar con algunos de ellos y tuve algunas preguntas y algunas inquietudes posteriormente al día de hoy.
I'd like to congratulate, thank you very much, Madanchea. Congratulate the team that the superintendent put together. I had the opportunity to talk to some of them today.
Me encanta el proyecto mascot, tengo que decirlo y no lo había visto antes y me encanta, quiero, quiero decirles que es bien motivante y sobre todo porque veo que en este proyecto tomaron mucho en cuenta lo que pedían los padres, los estudiantes y también los maestros.
To have to say that I do love the mascot project, that is very motivating to me, taking into consideration that they consider the opinion of the parents and the students and the teachers.
Solo quería subrayarle que me encantaría que hubieran puesto también las organizaciones comunitarias.
I would like to mention as well that it would have been ideal to include the community organizations as well as part of this process.
No tenemos, no podemos olvidar que las organizaciones comunitarias son las que educan a nuestras familias. Muchas veces nuestras familias enteran de, de situaciones dentro del distrito o beneficio a través de las organizaciones comunitarias. Muchas veces las escuelas no tienen la información.
We cannot forget the importance that this community organizations have as their voices to the community. It is them that educate the families. Sometimes they do know here about their benefits and without this information provided by those community organizations, they would not have this information, neither they would be aware of their benefits.
Tomando en cuenta que las organizaciones comunitarias están para educar, ¿verdad? Que es importante el trabajo que ellos hacen. Quiero, tengo algunas preguntas.
I have to consider, we have to consider that the main objective those community organizations have is to educate. In that particular regard, I do have a couple of questions.
Y es con relación a los aprendices del idioma inglés.
It has to do with the English learners, go ahead, Robyn.
El, el, el resultado de, de, de los exámenes para los aprendices del idioma inglés veo que ha sido siempre bien bajito.
I have to point out that actually the terms that the English language learners, the results that are evaluated have been always low and I'm going to explain that.
Me refiero al examen de evaluación integral que a los que son sometidos, los aprendices también del idioma inglés.
I am referring to the comprehension, to the comprehensive evaluation under which they are being evaluated, the English language learners, that is.
Entonces esto comienza a pensar que tenemos que nosotros utilizar una palabra en la presentación que se llama reimaginar. Voy a traer esta palabra porque también nosotros tenemos que pensar cómo mejorar los programas que tenemos para los aprendices del idioma inglés, para que ellos puedan estar más, más, puedan estar en mayor, en más y en igualdad con los demás estudiantes.
We have to consider one thing that is very critical. There was a word that was used previously or before, the word is reimagine. That same word has to be applied in terms of, applied in terms of bettering the opportunities that ELA or the English language learners have in order to promote equity in that behalf.
Porque veo que en la presentación mencionamos aprendizaje del idioma inglés en varias láminas. Esto es bueno, pero pienso que debemos impulsar nosotros, pensar cómo vamos a impulsar, cómo vamos a, a, a lograr que nuestros estudiantes aprendices no tengan esa descalificación porque no se pueden, no están en el mismo nivel de igualdad. Tenemos estudiantes, perdón.
So how are we going to achieve and be able to provide this same, this same type of opportunity to the English language learners? So this could be equitable, equitable. And we have to consider as well that the word ELA or English language learners were, was mentioned in different slides, which I see as a positive, but we have to provide equal opportunity in terms of the English language students.
Porque un estudiante, un, un estudiante que venga de República Dominicana, de El Salvador, que llegue a, a, que llegue a la escuela pública no tiene el mismo nivel que un, un estudiante que ya, que haya crecido, nacido y que tenga la misma oportunidad. Entonces no pueden presentarle el mismo examen, no puede ser.
So we have to consider different alternatives. We have to consider different circumstances in life. You cannot compare a student that comes from the Dominican Republic or for El Salvador for that purpose and compare that to a student that had grown here, that has been educated here in this educational system. We cannot measure them with the same standards that simply cannot be.
Entonces si no pensamos en esto, vamos a tener siempre el mismo porcentaje bajito.
So speaking about this, a low percentage that I was referring to regarding the ELA population, if we do not reconsider and think about this, this percentages will be always low.
Y la última parte la que quiero abundar es con relación al porcentaje, al, 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 a la, la baja matrícula que hemos tenido en el distrito, en, en Boston Public School en estos momentos.
One final point I would like to make, it makes reference to the very low rates of enrollment that we have been having in the Boston public schools.
Quiero dejar en la mente de todos los siguientes, cómo podemos nosotros recobrar la confianza de los maestros, de los estudiantes. Estamos perdiendo muchos estudiantes porque se están yendo de Boston para otras escuelas.
We have to consider the, we have to question ourselves, keep in our minds, how are we going to recover that trust from the teachers, from the students? We are losing multiple students because they're going to different systems, different schools.
Estoy escuchando a las familias, estamos escuchando a las familias, estamos escuchando a las organizaciones, estamos viendo la necesidad, las demandas que tienen las familias. Entonces en ese sentido quiero poner en sus mente que cómo podemos recobrar la confianza. Necesitamos que nuestras, nuestras escuelas públicas, que, 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 que las personas que lleguen a Boston puedan tener confianza en el sistema educativo público.
It is very critical. So the main question I would like to put in your mind is that how are we going to recover that trust in the Boston public schools? We have to keep in mind that the final level, the organizational level, there is multiple needs. We talk about needs, we talk about demands. How are we going to recover this trust that is critical in the Boston public schools? How are we going to do that?
Escuchemos las organizaciones comunitarias, escuchemos los padres, pero sobre todo pongamos nosotros en nuestros pensamientos, abramos nuestros corazones y pensemos que tenemos que recobrar esta confianza que muchas personas han perdido en el sistema público.
So you have to adhere to different community organizations, we have to adhere to our partners, we have heard from that. So let's open So you have to adhere to different community organizations. We have to adhere to our parents. We have heard from that. So let's open our minds. Let's open our hearts. Let's listen to our hearts. The critical point right here is to recover that trust that we have been losing in the Boston Public Schools. It is critical.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Lau.
I have some questions, but I'll limit it to one because I feel like this one's really important as the students of the school reached out to BSAK, to Zara and I, and I feel like this question is really relevant to budget, to the budgeting. Are there plans for investments into neighborhood schools since these are the schools that have strong enrollment? These are the schools that have a strong community and want to stay in schools and want that continued education. But if we continue to not provide those resources and not provide that like basis for them to continue on, we're going to lose that enrollment. So I was wondering if there is going to be a smooth transition for those students as we are making for schools that are transitioning to a K to six school and a seven to twelve school. Are there going to be more resources for these schools to continue on like the Shaw?
I think in terms of the the school configuration changes that are happening, the two, there are a few sets of them. The first was the K to six expansions. We started initially by announcing fifteen K to six expansions from, they were K fives that are converting to K to six. For each of those, we've been meeting with the school level teams to understand how they're planning to staff their sixth grade program. And in the first year, we don't base that purely on enrollment projections. We think about the capacity and what we want for that school and make the investments there. There are three schools because of the uniqueness of their implementation where we are thinking slightly differently around the staffing and supports. The Sumner, the Mendel and the Blackstone. On the Sumner and Mendel in particular because they're going to have two site solutions for their K to six. The second set of schools are the K to eights that are converting to K to six. The big supports that we're offering there are in student transition supports. We have a coordinator on our team who's working with each of the individual schools to track students and support them and making their choice for high school. This is a big transition for those families, big choice for those families. We want to make sure they have the resources. That of course is being supported by our welcome services team. The other group of schools is the seven to twelve expansions. The English High School announced the new seven twelve. Burke High School and Brighton High School were meeting with those schools actively to understand and how to invest to support those new programs. So there will be new investments in those schools to support them. Again, what we do is we determine how much capacity we want to add and then work with the schools to develop those budgets. The fourth school, who's part of the seven twelve expansions. Well, two other schools that are going through seven to twelve expanses or configuration changes that were previously announced are East Boston High School is adding an eighth grade next year. And then we're continuing to work the BCLA McCormick in their transition and expansion. In all of those cases that we're we're providing support outside of the traditional weighted student funding. You mentioned the PA Shaw, the PA Shaw is a K to three school. That is because of enrollment declines, they are closing one of their third grade classrooms. And that is what has sparked the conversation around, should they add a fourth grade classroom with that classroom that is no longer needed in third grade and make that a K to four school for next fall. There's no, there's no specific investment or support that's being planned right now. But as part of this process, and I think this is a nod to Ms. Robinson and a lot of the advocacy she's done over the last few years. We do hold a reserve going into this process to make sure that we're continuing to review school budget decisions and make sure that we haven't missed critical information or missed supports for that school's need. So all of the school budgets, the budgets are not final going into this hearing. We can, are continuing to work through that. Next week, we're going to talk to you about our school budget review committee, which is a cross-functional team that ensures consistency and equity. It's not the catchiest names of a committee we've ever formed, but it is an incredibly important team that's bringing support and consistency to how we think about individual school challenges. Let me know if there's any particular school community or neighborhood that you were thinking over that that I missed in terms of that answer because I do want to make sure that you and the students of BSAK have the information you need. And we talked with Zyra this morning about potentially coming to BSAK in the next couple of weeks and doing an engagement directly with them. So I'm excited about that conversation, though I'll be honest, makes me very nervous. Students always ask the most critical and tough questions.
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion without, within our council, just about that transition of adding the seventh and eighth graders to our high school communities. So we are hoping to meet with you guys to speak more about that.
That'd be great.
Dr. Alkins.
Thank you. And I just want to belabor this this point, and this might require some follow-up discussion. But this, within the the three tiers, return, recover and reimagine, as I look at particularly, I have the PDF up here, slides twenty-eight and thirty-three, just looking at the line items for the Esser funds. And I'm seeing that you have some of those support services as designated for recovery, but I'd like to implore that those are not simply recovery aspects. Those are resources that are going to very much need to continue much beyond the scope of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And so even if I look at slide thirty-three and I'm looking at supports for, I believe it's bilingual supports for increased native language programming and equitable literacy. I'm, I'm not in BPS, but my basic math is this sort of like, that's ten million that comes off the books for those types of support programming for 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 the very marginalized group of students. And so I'm just wondering how you all are planning to integrate this into the operational or the operating budget as you're preparing for the end of the Esser, Esser funds.
Um, yeah, thank you for that question. It's it's something that I worry a lot about. So I'm glad that you're asking the the questions about this. In terms of examples like the English learner programming, and and I think this fits into some of the special education reimagining programming. It fits into a couple of different ways that we think about how you can use the Esser fundings to change how we do our programming. The first in starting dual language and heritage language programs. We launched a Cabo Verdean heritage program. We've, we've launched and invested in a Vietnamese dual language program. And a lot of that that takes curriculum development and professional development support. So those are startup costs to a program that are not needed ongoing but are critical investments at this time to get us to start. The other piece is professional development and training for teachers to change their practices and learn new models for serving special education students and learning new models for English learners. And so I think we do, it sounds like we're getting a lot of questions around this topic, and I think this will be a good topic for us to to do a deep dive on with our central hearing and how this complements our ongoing investment. The last category I'll just say is oftentimes when we launch new programs, it takes staffing to start it up before the sort of weighted student funding will pay for it. Think of it as you need to start up a program before tuitions start rolling in and it starts to fill. And so in some cases, we're using that Esser funds to launch the capacity and and transition to it, but we can come back and David, I see wants to jump in with that question.
I was going to add a completely shameless plug to something that Nate answered earlier, asked earlier, which is we're about to launch this project to reimagine the way we fund schools. And so the one of the core inputs to that project is our academic vision for what every school should have and the quality guarantee. And so a lot of these investments on Esser are a combination of either pilots or as Nate said, startup costs for those different proposals. And the idea is we're coming back to you a year from now and being able to say, here's what we learned from some of that. Here's how we're thinking about potentially revising the way we fund schools. Right? To be able to incorporate some of those things. And also, you know, we've been spending fifty million dollars in old harmless. Here's how we're thinking about that going back into schools because our goal is not to save that money. Right? It's to reinvest that money straight back into schools as we figure out how to deal with our enrollment challenges in the longer term.
Mr. Carded Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, I have a few more questions and I know it's getting late, so I'm gonna, this hopefully will be one of my last sets. In slide fifteen and sixteen, there's like a section and it's not in front of me, but it's like, you know, what you heard from families and what you want to see, and it's in this beautiful quadrant. I am just saying, I, it's great information and I am, I was left wondering, like, what of those things are we actually achieving? Which ones will be universal and which ones are not? And so I think like there's a really strong like sort of visioning framing that's happening here. But as a parent, as a school committee member, like, people want to know sort of stuff and things and sort of like what is happening in real time. And I asked this question in many ways last time, like, what is going to change in my kid's life? And what will, what is the promise of Boston Public Schools that I can get? And I asked this about AP a lot, a few weeks last week. Right? Like that we can tell families, you know, no matter what high school you go to, you're going to have access to at least five AP courses. No matter what elementary school you go to, you're going to have access to STEM programming. And like some of those, like, there's a lot of like the reimmat, these sort of big, I call it as you speak, like, the sort of big education color language. And I just worry that there's like some really good stuff here that's getting buried. And I think it would be helpful for greater clarity in the next presentation or as this budget season continues to roll around like what become universal truths as a result of this investment? Because I do, I think if I'm like, we look under the hood, there are things that are now new promises that we can make to family. Not like you'll have, like, you'll get closer to access, but it's like there will be access to these things for every kid. And I think that clarity would be really helpful for us. Because if not, that slide is just like people told us this and like they're the vision for the future. But like, I want to, I don't care, like, you know, I don't care about the future. I want to know what's happening right now. So there's less a question, but more of like stylistically as we present this, I think that's going to be helpful for us to get into the meat and potatoes. There's that. I'm just curious and I sort of started thinking about this in a previous conversation we were having around some of the SEL screening that we do. And, you know, Boston has been a leader. I, when I was in New York, I was looking to Boston around how you think about screening for social emotional learning before the pandemic. And now everyone is having this conversation. You know, we, there was a lot of data shown, but I am curious what data is coming out of our current SEL screeners and how that is also informing where we are deploying resources or particularly for young people who are experiencing acute crisis and trauma right now. And I think we were all moved by the Surgeon General report. We saw fifty percent increase in adolescent girls who were hospitalized for suicidal ideations. I just want to make sure we, are you really precise around the deployment of those school psychologists, social workers, counselors, all of that. And we have data, Boston really national leader in having data around some of these complex mental health questions. And so I don't know if that is is part of the sort of programming, but I think it would be really helpful for us.
I think when we do these deep dives, we can definitely present the data on the SEO indicators. Also, we can, if it's ready, the Youth Risk Behavioral Survey, which we're able to give this year. You know, we had great participation in that. So we could also, if it's available, I'm just not sure if the results will be back yet, to also use that information as we adjust going forward.
Yeah. And just the same way we're using, and this is like, like our whole child approach, right? Like the same way we're talking about ELA and math outcomes, and it's connected to the way we're deploying resources to increase outcomes. Like, I just want to make sure we're doing that with mental health. And the way we're thinking, we have data around how our kids are doing at an individual school level. And not every school district can say that. And so there's a level of precision around how we're deploying that we could offer, particularly given this investment.
Yep. And agreed. I don't know, Doc Tackelson, did you want to speak at all about that? I see you put your light on.
I'll just add that I just wrote to a member of my team who leads that work and will be prepared with a pretty thoughtful presentation just about the analysis of the data and the investments that match with that. So thank you for raising that.
Thank you so much. And I have, do I have time? I'm out of time.
Thirty-one seconds, I think.
Here is the other thing, and I just want to make sure we have this. Could go on. This is great. And we're so lucky. How lucky are we to have this money to be spending on our kids? I just want to also like honor that, like this is just an incredible opportunity for us and it deserves this level of focus. There's a lot that hasn't worked and that's just like a reality. And at the, so we've, we're talking about new spending and I think there is a conversation to have around where we are making cuts. Programs that weren't working, things that weren't netting outcomes. I think sometimes it is a lack of investment and sometimes it is about poor investment. And so, you know, I want to make sure we're not just building our house on things that didn't work. And I think it would be good for us to also have a conversation, a hard conversation about like programmatic elements that weren't sufficient and that we're making different financial plans around. And I don't know if that gets included in this process.
Always looking for efficiencies. So, you know, that is a big piece of what we want to be doing and going forward. Obviously, we've been making some major investments over the past three years. And, you know, I feel like this is just a broken record that I say unfortunately with the pandemic, we've not been able to get under the hood to do some of the major cost-saving things that we want to do. You know, if you're gonna, you know, take care of enrollment, you have to have community conversations. And those require a lot of effort to be able to have those and capacity within the team to be able to go up to the community and have those community conversations when you're talking about multiple schools that could be impacted out of a hundred and twenty-one schools, right? And anytime you impact one, you impact another one and another couple of ones. And so you have to do those all in succession and they're just you know, that bill PPS had to be put on the side and that's probably where the major savings would probably come. And then also transportation and just really getting under the hood of our transportation. We've been, I meant to launch a transportation study, but we have been in very intense bus driver negotiations with our bus drivers right now and as not to agitate that process, I've put that on hold for until we get this contract to get under the hood of our transportation services.
And then just one more. I'm going to give my time. I will get back after Tiffany goes.
Okay.
Available, Mr. Carded Hernandez. You know, if you want to make an appointment and things like that between the hearings to offer more, more answers to everyone's questions, we'll, we'll make ourselves available to to all of you.
Ms. Lau.
I have some social emotional resources questions. I feel like I brought this up a couple of times, but like, as someone who currently attends BPS schools, I personally didn't know of a lot of mental health resources until I reached like a breaking point. And I am currently receiving help from these resources. But I feel like if a student has to reach a breaking point for these resources to be known to them, which is like a common experience for a lot of students that I've heard from. It shouldn't be like that, especially with this new funding. I was wondering if there's like a marketing plan in place so that students are aware of these new resources. And if these investments are also going to focus on finding social workers and counselors that are diverse since there's a lot of generational trauma, a lot of POC trauma that really that we only go through and we need people who can understand those experiences and can help us do those experiences. And also, a last part of this question. Are these social, social workers and counselors gonna have also like resources on helping students that do not want to follow the traditional path of college? Because I know right now, a lot of like schools are focusing on like, oh, you have to go to college and stuff like that. But that's not the path that everybody needs to go on. And I feel like there's kind of like a less support on that side. Especially in a lot of like high schools right now, like I'm hearing a lot from students, it's always like college, college this. But then like there are kids who want to follow another path, yet they feel like they are not supported in that way.
Well, one thing is we have a great Madison Park Vocational High School and we're really excited about that. So there are options for students who want to take a vocational pathway. And also guidance counselors now do have the information for multiple types of careers. That the students can go into the military if they want to go into the military or college. Or a community college and do some credentialing and certifications to move into career as well. So they'll have that training and background. That's the wonderful thing about academic guidance counselors. Is that they come with that type of training. So really, really important. The, the first part of your question is about will they be diverse? The wonderful part of being able to do this budget early. Is that we know if we have these investments, we can then post for these positions early and hire early. We did this with our family liaisons in positions. We did this with our social worker positions and we had very diverse candidates. If my memory serves me, I think our social workers were over eighty percent people of color. And our. Family liaisons, I think, were almost ninety-nine percent people of color. Now, I'm not sure if that's still accurate, it might be ninety-five, but, and then a lot of them were also linguistically. Had linguistic, dev, linguistically diverse backgrounds. I don't, do you have those direct numbers?
Superintendent, your numbers are correct. I have them ready, but you, you beat me to it.
Linguistically, I think it was sixty percent of them. I can't remember. I'm, it was a lot. Do you have that number?
I don't have the linguistic diversity, but I can confirm that, you know, more than eighty percent of our last round of hires, so. We hired eighty-four new school social workers for the current year. Of that group of eighty-four social workers. Eighty-one percent. Identified as a person of color. Roughly forty percent black and forty percent Latinx.
And family liaisons?
Family liaison is very, very similar. Slightly higher percentage is black and Latinx for family liaisons.
I do think we could put, we could get that for you on the linguistically diverse, because I think we presented that with our Human Capital Report, if I recall.
If I could just, I also just want to acknowledge that you opened the, the question by. Sort of talking about your own personal experience. And first of all, just thank you for being. Strong enough and brave enough to say that at the start of the question. I think as an adult going through this pandemic, it's been incredibly difficult. And when I think about what this would have done to me in high school, I just appreciate it. I think there's many of your peers who are experiencing. The personal trauma of this pandemic and the pressures that come from you in this pandemic. Trying to navigate a different course schedule and feeling the pressure to go to college. When hearing that it's becoming increasingly financially unsustainable to do that. Just, just really appreciate that. We do have to do a better job of letting students know what resources are available to them. I think it starts by making sure we have a whole lot more social workers, whole lot more school psychologists, which we've done. And now we need to also make sure that they know how to get supports and resources. The family liaisons, which the superintendent was smart enough to advocate for before the pandemic. They're meant to be resources that can build those connections. The work that we're doing with our revising safety services and building community resource officers. That's another way to build connections and identify kids who are expressing trauma and sometimes unproductive ways. This is meant, when we talk about this hub school model, it's meant to have the nurse, the school resource officer, the psychologist. All of the adults who interact with students in different ways to sit down together and talk about what they're seeing. And think about how to connect with students proactively. And so that's our goal for it. And I think, you know, I think student voice is incredibly important in this to tell us how we're doing because. You know, it's the, i- if, if we have these resources, but people don't know how to access them and we are. Resource-rich and impact poor, to quote, to quote Chief Corey Harris. And I think that that's, that's failing our students. So, so thank you for again, for acknowledging your own personal experience and then advocating for students in this way.
Thank you. This, Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this has really been a fascinating conversation so far enough. And I very intentionally kept my mouth shut because I wanted to hear how my fellow members were interpreting and, and. Thinking about the budget and, you know, we have some. Interestingly, we have a lot of parents now on this school committee and. Either current parents or, or parents of soon-to-be BPS parents as students. And hearing your perspective as long as, as long as Ms. Lyle's perspective as well. And I echo Mr. Kuta's comments and, and congratulations to you. And so. For sharing your perspective. And so it was fascinating for me. I have had the benefit of following a number of these budgets and. We do have a lot more resources this year. And so I want to particularly thank the superintendent. When I see that slide of the hundred million dollars, which is actually now one hundred and ten million in action. Which actually, when you think about it, you have to add the previous two years as well. So the superintendent, you know, you talk about audacious goals. When several years ago, she said, I'm going to go to the mayor and ask for a hundred million dollars over three years. Many people in this city chuckled. And it happened. And all of that money has gone. If you think about how it has been spent, we have more school nurses now. We have more school psychologists, we have more social workers, we have more family liaisons. A number of these supports around our students to help put them in a position to learn. And that wouldn't have happened without the superintendent. So when I see that slide superintendent, I have to congratulate you that. You said you were going to make that happen and you did. And in the middle of a pandemic and through three mayoral occupants of folks who. Have had the honor of serving as mayor of the city of Boston. So that's a big step. You know, I, I do worry like others and I know I'm a broken record on this, but particularly in the ESA funding. And I'm glad some fellow members brought this up, the concern on how we spend it so that we don't have funding shortfalls and cliffs in a couple of years. Because I have been through times when we are trying to make cuts. And it is extraordinarily painful. We have the benefit this year of, of not being in that position. Yes, we are making, and Mr. Kuta, you kind of alluded to it, there were some cases because of enrollment. Where you have to take some classes offline because the school may have two fifth grades that are eleven each. And that just doesn't make economic sense, you know, when we have the class size limit at that grade of twenty-five. And you can consolidate the two together. This is not about job loss for teachers or anything, but it's being efficient with our spending. And with that in mind, we do have a couple of big challenges. We don't, you know. There were many times in the past when we have had to really think through what the spending is and to be able to spend on this, we have to cut here. And. That will be coming as the ESA funding role slows down if we go into recession and the city's taxes cut back, et cetera. And, you know, we have some big challenges in our spending, transportation being one of them, the superintendent already talked about. Enrollment. Being another. And, you know, when we think, you know, there were plenty of reasons of why the enrollment is declining for us. You think of, you know, the previous national administration and the impact that had on slowing down the number of newly arriving. Residents to our city, many of whom, if they are coming now, are choosing maybe lower-cost cities. You look at gentrification, particularly in East Boston, where families are being forced out. And the residents taking those spaces don't have the same number of children and that plays in other areas. You do look at the increase over the past few years of the charter seats and the options for parents. You look at the impact of the pandemic and you look at some who have potentially chosen not to continue within BPS. You combine all of those and we have to do all we can to make sure we're getting the largest market share possible. Of school-aged children in Boston, right? That's, we want parents to choose Boston Public Schools. So the enrollment is a challenge and that leads to disproportionate spending, in particular on very small schools. And parents love very small schools because of the attention their child gets it and everything. And yet, we have heard over the past few years, particularly in elementary schools. Parents want gymnasiums, they want auditoriums, they want the school nurse to have their own space, they want art rooms, they want cafeterias. And rightfully so, right? Their child deserves that. But it's tough to do it in the space for some of the very small schools. We've seen some of the challenges already of moving K to fives up to K to six. They just physically can't handle it. And it's a really tough trade-off that we have to think about in coming years. And particularly if we, if we make a big push to expand early childhood seats, which I certainly think we should. We should make pre-K, you know, universal across all of our schools. And it's a great way to get parents in. But there's physical limits to our buildings and, you know, we are doing, someone in public comment early tonight said, well, we haven't built or planned any new buildings in Boston. Since Bill PPS started and, and I simply disagree with that comment. I drove by today, the brand-new Boston Arts Academy that's going to be opening in a matter of months. And I literally stopped and pulled off the car and just stared at the, stared at the building. It's so beautiful. And when I think about, you know, what a mess that was a few years ago and how hard it was. To get to that point of that building being built. And right up the street, we're deep in the planning stages for the new Carter School, which deals with our most disadvantaged students. And soon that will be in the final stages of approval with Mass School Building Authority. And so proud of the commitment of the superintendent and the, and the city over the past couple of years to get that building built. And the work we're doing on the new Quincy School, et cetera. So there's a lot going on, but we need to do a lot more. And so. I'm going to stop because I've spoken for too long. Mr. Kuta probably knows that I'm probably not going to ask any questions right now because this is also the beginning of a very long process. The, the district has to present to us on the first Wednesday in February, a budget. We have to vote on it by the fourth Wednesday in March. Those are the only two things that we also have to hold. At least two separate independent hearings, separate from our school committee meetings. But if you look at the calendar that was on that last slide, we're going to have about five or six bites of the apple to talk through this budget. And, and I will say to my fellow members, many times the final budget that we approve on does have differences from what. The final budget we vote on does have differences from what was originally submitted to us. And a lot of times that's because of input of school committee members over the time. And what we learn collectively through the budget hearings, feedback from the community, et cetera. So people who say the school committee doesn't have impact on a budget. I challenge you to look at the budget we actually voted on versus the budget that was originally submitted. So these questions to the district and feedback that we get, and in particular. The hearing where we focus in on the school budgets. And then the separate hearing where we focus in on the central budgets really get very detailed and. We get a chance to really dive in on the questioning. So. Mr. Kuta and, and Mr. Bloom and the rest of your team, thank you very much for a very thoughtful presentation tonight. I, I learned a lot. It's exciting. And by the way, quite frankly, I think some of it may be a little bit conservative. Because what we did not talk about tonight, and I hope we do it some of the future ones, is what the budgeting was, particularly around the federal funding. And because right now, at least the guidance of the Council of Great City Schools is what cautiously optimistic that there's going to be increases in Title I, Title II, IDEA, et cetera. Between when we look at what the House, the Senate and, and the Biden administration have proposed, all of them look like they're going to be increases. So I look forward to in a future conversation talking about what you budgeted and if we get extra funding, how it would be spent, et cetera. Because obviously that is so far down the line, you'll have to be conservative at this point. So thank you for a great presentation. I look forward to digging in more as we move forward.
Thank you. I just want to ask one question tonight. I know we'll have many more opportunities. But my question really is about soft landings, particularly looking at over the, when you showed the four-year slide. The amount that soft landings have grown in the past two years is astronomical. And I don't know how many years the district's been doing soft landings. And if you've got an analysis of, are there particular schools that have been receiving soft landings over the long haul? And, you know, what do the soft landings buy us? In the bigger sense, but specifically what aren't they buying us? That if that money was able to go directly to students. You know, how are we helping all of ourselves, particularly our families, to understand the choices we make? We all, everybody wants to advocate for what they have and what they love. But in the, but in the long run, are we doing best by our students? And when do we, when are we fully transparent? About what these options are? And how do we bring our community together with us to begin to think through some different solutions? So that more money goes directly to student impact and not buildings, et cetera.
Well, if you're going to ask one question, that, that's a great question to ask. And, and a really important one. You touched on a lot of different pieces to it. Soft landings have been a function of the way, the way we have implemented weighted student funding, almost from its beginning. The original implementation of, of weighted student funding needed to transition schools. From their previous allocations to what they'd get under WSF. In some cases, schools got more funding, in some cases they got less. So they've always been thought of as transition funds. Starting about five or six budget years ago, we implemented a standard soft landing. For small fluctuations in enrollment. Recognizing that year-to-year enrollment shifts. And it didn't make sense for schools to be shifting their budget every year based on those, those sort of random fluctuations. But you're right, the increase over the last two years has been significant and intentional. Way to support schools where we've gone through some pretty significant enrollment decreases. Last year, we came to you and told you that part of it was because we didn't know where enrollment projections were going to go. We didn't know how many kids were being held out of the system just for the one year with all the disruption. And so now we have some more information. We need to talk about how do we transition that going forward. I do think we can, we can talk more at the school's hearing about the soft landing process and what it buys. And how it, how it has protected non-classroom spending. The sort of non-compliance spending. And in particular, I think we, we can highlight for you. The schools that have received soft landings or supplemental allocations for multiple years in a row. I think that signals some schools we might want to think about. How to, you know, are they on a warning list, as the superintendent's asked me to sort of think about in terms of schools? There's a warning list of schools that are unsustainable. Or, again, to plug the reimagined school funding. Does it indicate a place where we might want to rethink how we allocate funds? Because weighted student funding doesn't work in these situations. We started weighted student funding with six schools that, that were funded outside of the model, saying those are unique. And their funding cannot fluctuate on enrollment in the same way. The Carter School, Mr. O'Neill mentioned is one of them. There may be other examples and there may be ways for us to examine it, but I do think those are important data points that we should touch upon.
Thank you. My, my, my last question will be. As we have created school budgets, has every school used the racial equity planning tool to look at their budget? And then do we do anything with the planning tool across schools of similar sizes? To understand who goes there. We know that, you know, again, as we've listened to the Shaw, the Shaw is a small walk-to-school. In particular neighborhoods, we know that we have other small walk-to schools in other neighborhoods, you know. Who goes to those schools and are they equitably funded? The other question is, the problem of the Shaw is similar to the problems of the early learning centers. Who stop at a particular grade and parents jump ship to go to a K to six where they can keep their kid all along. Even though they like the idea of the. of the pre-K to one or pre-K to two. How do we think about those schools as we're thinking about these, you know, pathways? For the both ends. So that, that's my issue around the equity planning tool.
Yeah, great question. I think in terms of the school-based usage of the racial equity planning tool. I don't know, David, if you have a comment on that? If not, we'll, we'll need to, according with the team and come back to. There, the use of the equity roundtables is an important part of the budget process and the S R planning process. In terms of our office and the way that we think about the racial equity planning tool, we both think about it in terms of the overall evaluation of the budget process. And evaluating the budget as a whole. And then there are certain cases where we will use a racial equity planning tool on specific targeted decisions. But the equity analysis is a place that we're diving in and really assessing that. And I think in terms of school choice, who has access to small schools. That's a really important question to ask around this foundation for quality. You know, I'll be honest, I thought of the foundation for, or the quality guarantee as potentially having different equity implications on a per pupil basis. But we've looked at it and find that really the, it, it does support our equity agenda and does spend more on our marginalized groups. And that's something that we can come back and continue to to demonstrate. And we'll have updated equity analysis, additional equity analysis at our school budget hearing in next week.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any final questions before we close out?
David, did you want to say? I'm sorry.
Anyone have anything? If not, I want to thank you again. And I'd like to remind everyone that tonight marks the beginning of a dynamic two-month budget process. We have a series of remote budget hearings scheduled over the next several weeks, starting next Thursday, February tenth at IPM. You can review all of the budget documents online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can email your comments to budgets@bostonpublicschools.org. And of course, you can email the committee by visiting the committee's webpage, bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee. Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendation for the next fiscal year. The committee will vote on the superintendent's final twenty, fiscal year twenty-three budget recommendation on March twenty-third. We'll now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers or public comments on reports.
Right, thank you. Any new business? Not that concludes our business for this evening. The remote school committee meeting will take place on Tuesday, February fifteenth at five PM. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. It's a remotion.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So any discussion or objection to the motion? Carrie Nunn, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardette Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopara?
Yes, one of the most.
Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes, one of the most.
Mr. Tran? Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, good night, good evening, everyone.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Good night, everyone, and thank you. The meeting is adjourned.